Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll try it one more time. This is full audience participation. Good evening!
Good evening!
Thank you and welcome to the November 18th, 2019 meeting of the Shawnee Planning Commission. We'll begin with roll call. Commissioner Montgomery is absent. Commissioner Roth.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Willoughby.
Here.
Commissioner Beenhoff is absent. Commissioner Busby is here. Commissioner Wise.
Here.
Commissioner Baywell is absent. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Bingham. Commissioner Nunick is absent. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent items 1 through 6 are listed under the consent agenda. Unless there is a request to remove the items from the consent agenda, the items will be approved in one motion. Is there a request to remove any item from the consent agenda? I have a request and that is number five. SP 311911, come out of the consent agenda. Are there any other items that need to come out of the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Peterson.
I move that we approve the consent agenda per staff notation except number five.
Is there a second? Commissioner Roth. Motion is second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of number five. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. And as that's been severed from the consent agenda, item number five, which is SP 3119-11, Go Car Wash located, excuse me, 13621 West 63rd Street. And my comment on that is, in the drawings, we depict a stripe around the top of the building and it's not marked for size. Is the applicant present? If you'd come forward and state your name and address, please, sir. Thank you, Mr. Castor. My comment is, is when we're looking at that, that stripe across the top does not have dimensions on it, so I can't tell how thick it is. It goes all the way around the building.
Okay.
And that concerns me. The other thing is, when I look at that, it appears to be me, to be, the way it's constructed, of more of a sign rather than an architectural feature.
Okay. The building right now has a very low profile. I don't know if Doug can pull up the elevations, but...
We don't have, since this was on consent, but what's on the overhead?
Well, from your packet, you could tell. Basically about, the buildings, the two-thirds marked roughly up on the building is the existing top. How does that work? So what we have, the existing building on both what is the east wind end, which is the left part of the screen, and the right end have like small pitched roof towers existing. What we're looking to do is remove the pitched roof of the tower, raise that up a little and then add a, basically just a parapet all the way around the building to just give the building a little more presence on the site. As far as the elevation of the stripe, the height of the stripe, we went with the profile of the logo, which is the logo for the national car wash of Go Car Wash. They had the circle with the car wash. We just kept their same proportions and that led the banding to be, the orange portion is 36 inches tall and then it has a thin, about a two and a quarter inch blue stripe above it and black above that. So that's kind of their theme, the orange, blue and black. They have some other locations within the city. The Overland Park one, I think it's, our total band is about 40, 45 inches tall. Overland Park's is about 48, but the signage itself is well under the regulations the ordinance is allowed. So we just kind of were keeping the same proportion, the circle relative to the banding.
And my disagreement with that is when I look at Sheridan's custard out there, Fritz's out there, the mini mall that sits behind it, the Hy-Vee, the Hy-Vee gas station and the other gas station out there, I think that's a Sunoco. None of them have banding around the top. I certainly think adding the parapet, parapet wall up there helps, but a three-foot wide band, to me, is big enough that it's almost distracting, but I'm not sure it's very nice looking. And my suggestion, because you've carried it with your Go Car Wash, then it almost looks like the whole thing becomes a sign to me. And I don't want to regulate it as a sign, but would you consider cutting that length of that to say after Go Car Wash, after three feet of that, it's stopping that? Because that would be a sign up there, but the rest of it wouldn't be so, if you will, flashy.
Mm-hmm. I don't know if we wouldn't need some other treatment then on the parapet. We may need to do something else to enhance it so it's not just a blank wall at that point. Would you entertain just shrinking the profile of the band?
I think that's when we'll get the other commissioners into the conversation as well. But to me, if the least would be, is if the total amount of that striping was 12 inches or less, including the blue, what you would have to me then is an architectural feature that would be noticeable and yet it wouldn't be so big that it would be so, if you will, glaring. Because I don't think with the other buildings that don't have that on the top in the whole neighborhood, then it wouldn't stand out as being completely different type of architectural renderings on it. And at this point in time, I think if staff has a comment on this, or likewise, if any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant. Mr. Willoughby.
So the letters of the word "car wash," how tall are they?
A little under two feet. So about one foot 10, I think is the text height for the word "car wash." I don't know. The "go" is probably more like 30 inches tall, the "go."
Right. But the car wash itself is 20, 22 inches some.
Correct.
So, I mean, if we were going to shrink the band, I would say shrink it to the size of the car wash, you know, my suggestion.
Okay. Anyone else? To me, if we don't shrink it down to about 12 inches, then I'm not sure, it still looks like it's almost a continuation of the sign and therefore a sign to me. And we hit issues with what is sign, what is architectural feature, but that's what shrinking it down would appease to me. If it was narrowed down and came down to that issue went out, I wouldn't have a big objection to that. But just the two, three feet of orange stripe with blue around it, going around there, just to me is a little too much for the area and what architecture is there presently.
We had had some different iterations of the building where, basically, the owner came to us and wanted a, you know, to increase the height of the tower because it has poor visibility from Shawnee Mission Parkway.
Mm-hmm.
So when we looked into getting into that portion of the tower, the city's ordinance forces you to drive up the rest of the heights of the building, which kind of, since the sign and the band that represented the sign have to be lower than the top roof of the building, that kind of forces that proportion, then you start to say, well, how do you treat the rest? And I don't know what your recommendation would be for, obviously, one option would be just stopping the orange or narrowing the other.
Well, and I think that's what I presented with my problem and you could tell me what you think would be appropriate, I guess is what it is. And the other commissioners can certainly weigh in on any of this. Would you cut that? And I think you're right, that cutting, putting that parapet wall up there and not having something up there as an architectural feature might not look right. So would you consider cutting it down to a total of 12 inches wide after you come off the, just behind the car wash part of it? If it's 12 inches wide, it's going to look more like an architectural feature than a big stripe that's about that big. And that just seems to be too big and too, too out of character with the neighborhood.
Okay. I don't mind working with that.
That'd be fine. That'd be fine. Do the commissioners have any other questions or comments on this? Does staff have any comments on this?
We'll work with the architect to come up with a revision to reflect what you just asked for. And that will just be the approved plan for the revised site plan. We won't need to bring them back to you unless you absolutely want to see that again.
So if we had a motion that said we're going to, that will be reduced and worked out with staff, then you'd be fine with that, Doug?
Yes. They were very good to work with in terms of raising that parapet to make that building look the way it does in that photo.
But I think the parapet will look nice. It will help to add to that building, I really do. That was my only concern. And welcome from the people from Arizona coming into the Kansas City area and investing in it. And I'll be glad to see that car wash back open. My wife may even buy me car wash tokens there.
Okay.
Would someone care to make a motion that wraps this up? Commissioner Wise.
I'll make a motion to approve SP 31-19-11, per staff recommendations, and with the caveat that the orange banding, not at the towers, but between the towers, is reduced to approximately 12 inches. And that the architect will work with the staff to revise those elevations.
Is there a second? Would you please second it? There's a motion, a second to approve SP 3119-11, Go Car Wash, per staff recommendations, and with the narrowing of the banding around the top of it. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On to new business. Under new business, SP 2819-11, Arvest Bank at 6219 through 6225 Lucille Lane, preliminary site plan. Staff?
Good evening, Doug Allman, planning staff. Stephanie is ill tonight and so I'm going to try to do this presentation for her. This is a proposal by Arvest Bank to do a small branch bank building at the intersection of Shawnee Mission Parkway, Frontage Road and Lucille, just east of, or west of Neiman on the north side. This is an infill project that would take down a couple of existing buildings, property zone, commercial highway, and the site area is about .6 acres if I remember correctly. This is a layout of the originally proposed site plan and an elevation of the building bank there with the automated, actually interactive teller machines over on the Lucille side of the site. Again, these are the building elevations, brick structure, earth toned brick with some accent colors on the architectural portion of the front, especially the front, the south elevation that faces, excuse me, Shawnee Mission Parkway. In the staff report, there was a discussion about angled parking. And I will tell you, there's probably been more discussion over this little rule of parking here than I've seen in my years as a planner. And because of that, today I was able to talk to the applicant and they sent over a revised diagram. And what that does, it demonstrates that a nine-by-18 stall will work. They were able to widen this driveway out a bit, lose a stall, and then demonstrate that the tail end of cars will still be behind that protected island area. We had asked, just as a passing comment, when we thought this might be 45-degree, that we reduce all of this down to 14 feet. They actually did reduce this down to 15 feet approximately to discourage two-way traffic and they will sign that appropriately. So I think with this revision, staff is comfortable with the layout that's shown. On this item, it's an interesting proposal because it is infill. And for those of you that haven't been on the commission maybe for a long time, there is a policy that was adopted back in the early 2000s in our Conference of Plan that specifically talks about branch banks. I don't know if you're familiar, but the phenomenon back in the mid-2000s was that very prominent intersections on arterials were being devoured by small, and I say small, 2,500 square foot banks. Actually, one proposal for a branch bank at Lackman and 67th was proposed and it was denied zoning. And today, we have our mini hospital there. And so it was intended to protect those very important intersections for more appropriate, larger scale development. That being said, the policy is in existence still. We did not make a recommendation on the policy. It's really something for you all to discuss. But as I said, and I'll be fair to the applicant, this is a, it's less than an acre size site. To do a 10,000 square foot building there, you could not park it. And I will say it's own commercial highway, so banks are allowed in that zone. But again, I don't want to just say that the policy's not still important. So that's something that probably more than the seven parking stalls that we spent so much time talking about is probably more what you will discuss, I'm assuming. With that, I would complete our brief presentation. I believe the group here with Arvest would like to do a quick presentation. I have that here. And then Chris, if your team wants to talk more about that diagram, I've got that as well here for you. I can make that available. So, and you can run that from that computer.
Perfect. Good evening. Chris Hafner with Davidson Architecture and Engineering, 4301 Indian Creek Parkway, Overland Park, 66207. Thank you for the time, really acting as architect and designer for Arvest. We're excited about this opportunity. It's a great site to be able to kind of take two existing uses, come back with something new and exciting on that site to serve, you know, Shawnee with an Arvest Bank. Doug is correct. We worked a lot with staff on the site plan. We had an initial submission October 15th that had 90-degree parking and a two-way drive aisle. And through the iterations of understanding right-of-way taking that we have given up on our east and coming up with appropriate sized lanes for our three ITM lanes on the west side, we came back and ultimately ended up with 90-degree parking in a one-way scenario. Working with Stephanie on a call, we basically came back and determined if we can angle those parking stalls and really direct flow of traffic as someone backs out of that parking stall and heads north, but they do that instead of coming back out the wrong way onto Frontage Road. We were able to angle those 60 degrees and keep what our client found as the minimum of seven spots, keeping the ADA stall right by the front door. We felt that was important. Able to work through all of that. Just on Friday, we had another conference call and we were able to take, really the big issue, just so you know, that ITM was up against the building and they needed a certain amount of clear space behind that to be able to access it if there was a problem, things like that. We talked on Friday and what I sent Doug just this morning was sliding that ITM south, reducing that lane width as well. So the south has an effective 14-foot drive aisle, just like the north did, which we agreed to and moved forward with staff on that. But it allowed that ITM to move south and the building to slide over west just a little bit and give us enough clear space, really all the space we would need in front of that ITM. Let the building move, keep a six-foot sidewalk, get the angled stall that Stephanie was looking for, as well as the one-way drive with 460 degrees parking. So I think, I think we're there. You know, if we're there in total, I know there was a comment about access points on Lucille and Frontage. It really is our desire to keep those both two ways. If you look at that site, it really affords someone leaving the bank to go out to Lucille if they needed to, or someone coming north on Lucille to be able to use the ITMs. As you can imagine, by the size of this building and the limited parking stalls, Arvest is a smart banker. They know where their clients go and it's really those drive lanes. And that's why it was important to keep the three and not reduce it down and things like that. That was really the bulk of our business for Arvest moving forward. So we're excited about this. We do have two other locations that are getting ready to start in Overland Park at 95th and Metcalf and in Alatha at Black Bob and 151st. We've got two new locations going there and we're excited for this one to be our third. So I'm happy to answer any technical questions about the site plan, the building elevations, if we don't have any. And at that time, Mr. J.D. Christie, as a developer, is going to stand up and kind of talk about some iterations that had been tried on this site before. Mr. Mark Willoughby with Arvest Bank will then stand up, talk about the bank a little bit and kind of express our desire to have Arvest here on this intersection.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for Mr. Hafner? I have a question for staff here, and that is, with the change around, the staff is still concerned about the access from Lucille Lane and Frontage Road.
We were just discussing that. It's with the shrinking of that northern driveline, I think the concern was that you might have someone trying to go the wrong way and going upstream versus downstream. Now that the spaces are angled and that northern driveline has been shrank, I don't see a problem with two-way traffic accessing those ATM lanes on the west side. The site flows is adequate. It's a small site. They're trying to make the building and all of their necessary accessory uses fit. And I think through a lot of discussion, I think we've been able to come up with a compromise that will work for us.
Thank you, Doug. If no other questions for him right quick, then if you'll go ahead with your presentation. Thank you, sir.
Does this work as well? Could I just click from here?
Perfect. Thank you.
Members of the commission, thank you for your time this evening. My name is J.D. Christie with Area Real Estate Advisors and we're at 4800 Main Street in Kansas City, Missouri, Suite 400. I'm the developer on this project and been working with Chris Haffer and the Arvest team for over six months on this opportunity. And, I'll go to my next slide here. This project would combine two small lots currently constructed as a small commercial office building, which is shown here. It currently houses a haircut and barber shop as well as a single-family residence, which is immediately to the north of that, shown here. Both of these properties were built in the mid-'50s, have, depending on the property, have significant deferred maintenance and per environmental study have quote, "large amounts of friable asbestos-containing material in the properties." We initially met with staff regarding this development on May 31st of this year. At that point, staff made us aware of the existing ordinance that Doug just previously spoke about. With that feedback, we kind of went back to the drawing board with our experiences with cities such as Shawnee as well as other municipalities. Sales tax is a big important factor for retail, especially on this corridor. And we were trying to find a retail-oriented or food-oriented user that we could bring to the city. Our marketing campaign was cut short pretty quickly. Obviously, as Chris alluded to, the site is extremely challenging, not because of, partly because of the site size, but it's also extremely narrow with setback requirements. It makes it virtually impossible for a fast food user to utilize this site. Most fast food users have a number of non-negotiable site development requirements, including at least 10 to 12 spaces, parking spaces per thousand square feet, eight to 10 car drive-through stacking, a kick-out drive-through lane, and the list goes on. And as you can see, it's .6 acres. It makes it extremely difficult and rather quick to find out that a national fast food user frankly just won't fit. I won't go through this, I just alluded to that. But we've designed and tweaked the site plan every which way possible and really found that we've found a great user that would be new to the city of Shawnee, can, but most importantly, can fit a new prototype typical building on this site. And lastly, our development request requires no tax incentives from the city of Shawnee, which we feel is very rare in today's marketplace. So I'd like to turn it over to Mark Willoughby, who's the president and CEO of the greater Kansas City area, to tell you a little bit more about Arvest. Thank you. Any questions?
Please proceed.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. My name is Mark Willoughby and I'm the president and CEO of Arvest Bank here in Kansas City and address is 6300 Noll, Mission, Kansas. And I'd like to spend a little time just talking about who we are, because we're relatively new to Kansas City. But we were founded in 1961 when Sam Walton bought the bank of Bentonville in Bentonville, Arkansas. And at the time, this predates of him starting Walmart. At the time, he was a Ben Franklin Five-and-Dime merchant. Before he would go into a town, he wanted to make sure the community had a good bank because if it didn't have a good bank, it wouldn't be a good place to do business or live or do anything else. And so he bought the bank of Bentonville, started Walmart, and over the years acquired a couple more banks. And as Walmart took off, he got his son Jim engaged in the business of the banking. And today, Jim has grown our bank to $20 billion in assets. We operate in Oklahoma, Arkansas, Southern Missouri and Kansas City. As a $20 billion bank though, we still maintain our community bank roots and we're organized as 14 banks, each with its own board of directors, a lot of operating autonomy and a commitment to our communities, which is very unique for a large bank. Here in Kansas City, we just celebrated our 10th anniversary and are proud to say we should finish this year with a billion dollars of assets in the market. We employ 334 employees in the community here in Kansas City. And our commitment to the community was backed with over $2.25 million in donations from the bank or our foundation just here in Kansas City, the charitable organizations. the bank or our foundation just here in Kansas City, the charitable organizations. So what we do, we're a commercial bank and our mission statement is people helping people find financial solutions for life. And so we offer retail banking, we offer commercial banking, wealth management, and do the things that help our customers survive and thrive in a financial world. I think one of the things that demonstrates our commitment to community is this year our organization will generate $2.7 billion of residential mortgage loans. Most organizations originate those loans, they sell them into a secondary market and with that sale, they transfer the servicing of those loans to a 1-800 number with somebody that doesn't know who the borrower is, never worked with the borrower. We retain all that servicing, because we think it's important that customers be able to talk to the person that originated their loan. That's very unique for a bank. And we are a world-class organization. I say that with pride. We've won 14 consecutive J.D. Power Awards for highest in customer satisfaction. We're rated by Forbes as one of the best banks in the world, certainly one of the best in the United States, and also best large employer in the United States. And locally, we've been recognized in the local press as the best bank in Kansas City, the best bank for small business lending in Kansas City, as well as the best employer. So we're proud of the service we deliver and what we can bring to Shawnee. So why Shawnee? And I would answer that, why not Shawnee? There is so much great stuff happening in Shawnee. You just look downtown with all the developments, you've got the cones, you've got everything that shows that Shawnee's on the move. And this map that you look at shows the customers we already have in Shawnee. We have 1,200 account relationships with people who live, work, or have businesses here in Shawnee. And the number-one thing that we hear when we do surveys of our customers and the city at large, where should we put a branch? Shawnee consistently ranks as the number-two location for Arvest branches, which is why we're so excited about this opportunity. Why this building? Well, it's obviously a small building. But I think as we all reflect on the early 2000s, when a 10,000-square-foot building maybe made sense for a bank, banking has changed. Our customers bank with us 24/7, on their phone, at their computer, in their bed, in their slippers, in their robe, and they just don't come into banks as much as they used to. Let's be honest about that. Industry statistics show that bank transactions are dropping by 6% to 7% a year. So at that rate, it's not too long before you're not doing many transactions. But J.D. Power's research will tell you that a customer banks only online is not nearly satisfied that their relationship is warranted banks online and in a branch. And further, the research will tell you that the number-one criterion, irregardless of how you use a bank, the closest location remains the primary determinant. So it's important we have a physical location. That said, why is it? Well, it's because when a customer has a problem or they have a really complex financial need, they want to come in and talk to somebody. They don't want to do that over the phone. They want to see people eye to eye and talk to them. But it makes it difficult for us as a bank to say, how do we create physical presence when customers don't want to come in and use us except very occasionally? And so we want to create physical presence through small format branch. It makes sense from an investment standpoint, helps us keep our costs low, keeps costs low for our customers, and yet gives them the convenience that they're looking for in a bank today. Obviously, the issue's been put out by Doug. The Shawnee comprehensive plan says these buildings are supposed to be 10,000 square feet, preferably multi-tented, preferably multi-story. And yet, there's a whole slew of banks out there that have been approved along Shawnee Mission Parkway that don't meet that criteria. So we're not unique in asking for an exception here. And why are we thinking exceptions warranted? Well, one, the residents, your citizens, are asking us to come here. As I mentioned, we've got 1,200 relationships already. It's the number-two location when we're asked, when we ask where should we be, is Shawnee. As was demonstrated, there's not a lot of alternative uses for a .6-acre site. It's very small, very limited, and it is an upgrade over the current property use. I think we would all agree, at least we'd the architectural distinction category, if not the size category. And I think as was pointed out, there are no tax incentives being asked. In fact, the opposite is being asked. We're willing to enter into a pilot agreement with the city that would guarantee a minimum of $15,000 in tax payments. There weren't literally taxes, but payments to the city in lieu of taxes that could otherwise be generated on this site. And we've looked at banks along the Parkway who are smaller, 3,100 to 6,000 square feet, they're paying an average of $4,000 in property tax. We've looked at fast-food restaurants and they're generating roughly $4,500 in property tax. The current properties are only generating $2,500. And we're willing to enter into an agreement with the city to pay $15,000. So we realize that exceptions are hard to come by. They're a big ask of the commission, but we think we have a compelling case for this particular location to ask for an exception. And we appreciate your consideration and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have about Arvest or our plans for the community.
Any questions for Mr. Larrabee? One thing, Mr. Larrabee, is we're not a taxing authority, so we have no opinion on the taxes.
I understand. Yeah. But I thought you'd be happy to know we're willing to pay out more than our tax share.
I think I am, and I'm sure everybody is here as well, but it's, we don't have an opinion on that.
I understand.
Very good. Are you the last presenter there?
I am. We've worn you out, I'm afraid.
Ah-ha. So does the commission have any questions for applicants or staff? Commissioner Peterson?
I'm not exactly certain which one of you three wants to answer this, but thank you for working with staff. But are you okay with the slanted parking slots and that that looks to be something that would be beneficial for all of you?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions for applicant or staff?
I have a question for staff. And that is, is we have policies, and if my memory is correct, then the policy that's enforced on this banking deal, we have a variance from it, but we were not the only entity that decided on that policy. Is that correct?
It's part of the comprehensive plan. You make a recommendation in the city council and they actually adopt the comp plan by ordinance, but you are the planning organization in the city for the most part. I would say too, that when we adopted that policy, I was here. And we were very concerned about the size of buildings that were taking large prominent intersections. I think that the policy could be amended, maybe putting an acreage minimum, something like that. But I think it puts the city in a difficult position to say that an allowed use in a certain zone can't go there because it has to be 10,000 square feet and you cannot build this allowed use at 10,000 square foot. It would not park and you could not meet the setbacks. So I think the discussion of the policy, and if you ask me if this could be precedent-setting, I would say in the context of redevelopment, no. I would say it's not precedent-setting.
Very good. Thank you, Doug. And if I'm remembering correctly too, if we were to pass this, the city council could also refuse it because they want to adhere to the policy. Is that correct?
That's not correct. This is a preliminary site plan, the property's zoned, the planning commission approves preliminary and final site plans. The council will not be weighing in on this site plan. That is, that's, they have set the ordinance up so that you are the body that reviews site plans, aesthetics, those sort of things. There's no zoning involved in this request, no special use permit either.
Thank you, Doug. Does the commission have any other questions for applicant or staff? At this point in time, does anybody from the audience wish to make a comment on the Seeing none, then we're in commission discussion. The points that Mr. Larrabee and others are making with this project is that banks don't need to be as big as they used to be, and I completely agree with that. Somehow, I'm a little uncomfortable saying, hey, we have a 10,000-square-foot policy and this is 887 square feet, and go, well, that's not just a variance from a policy. That's essentially saying that policy makes no sense. I'm not sure in today's world it does make as much sense, so I'm becoming more comfortable with it than I was 15 minutes ago. Good. Commissioner Peterson?
I agree with Chairman Busby. I have three children that are college age and more, and I tell them they should go into the bank and meet their banker, and they're like, why? Things are different. And this is a infill project with, that is less than what we would like to see on Shawnee Mission Parkway currently. And I think it's, I think staff has done a good job of adjusting that and making this work for all of us to benefit from. And thank you for looking into us and thank you.
Any other comments? Any other commission discussion?
Yeah, let me ask one question to the staff. If it were not for the 10,000 square foot in this, would staff have recommended this? Does that tie up all the loose ends as whether or not we grant this variance or against this, then would staff recommend this?
With the exhibit that we received today, we're comfortable with what they're proposing.
Which is not what we're looking at, because these are sheets, our agenda and staff was printed before those changes were made.
Correct, okay.
Yes. I was still working on this with Chris this morning, so, yes.
So staff would have recommended if it wasn't, if that was the only issue, is that policy? Very good. At this point in time, any further discussion? Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve SP 2819-11, Arvest Bank at 6219 through 6225 Lucille Lane, subject to the conditions listed on the staff report dated this date.
Is there a second? Commissioner Robb?
Second.
There's a motion, the second, to approve SP 2819-11, Arvest Bank at 6219 through 6225 Lucille Lane, preliminary site plan. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Welcome to the community. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. We're glad to be here.
Next on the agenda is SP 29-11 and S 129-19-10, Incredible Pizza at 13110 West 62nd Street, facade revision and sign variance. Staff is in line.
Good evening. All right. So the project we are reviewing is for Incredible Pizza. It's for both a sign variance and a facade revision application. A new tenant, Incredible Pizza, is moving into the prior PowerPlay tenant space at 13110 West 62nd Street in the Mill Creek Shopping Center, which is generally located northeast of Flum and Shawnee Mission Parkway. The site is zoned commercial neighborhood and allows for commercial uses, including the indoor recreation facility with approval of a special-use permit. That special-use permit's actually scheduled to be heard in December, so this is just the initial review for this project. Tonight, we are reviewing first the site, excuse me, sign variance application. The applicant has requested a variance for both the sign location as well as sign size. So as you can see on the rendering, on the lower half of the screen there, they are proposing two signs. The first, the Incredible Pizza, kind of in the center of the facade, and then on the east side of the facade, Family Fun Buffet. The sign code permits wall signs to be up to 7% of the facade, and that would be approximately, in this instance, 535 square feet. We do permit a variance with planning commission approval and not to exceed 25% of what is normally permitted. And that means up to essentially 669 square feet. The applicant is requesting, in this case, both a sign again and a size and location variance. So they're requesting that both be together, Incredible Pizza sign and Family Fun Buffet meet that 8.75% that is allowed with sign variance requests. The second item is for location. We allow wall signs if they are adjacent to street frontage and/or adjacent to 40 feet of parking indoor drive aisle. In this instance, the Incredible Pizza, the south facade faces 62nd Terrace there and the east facade faces, is adjacent to 40 feet or more of parking indoor drive aisle. They would like to move, in lieu of the sign on the east facade, they would like to have two on the south facade. Both of those items are up for your discussion this evening. You can grant a variance approval for both the location and the size, or one or the other. The variance, sign variance criteria is noted in the staff report, but based on staff's review of that criteria, we are not recommending approval of the sign variance requests, essentially due to the lack of uniqueness of the site as well as the user or commercial-type use in this location, which is very similar across the board along Shawnee Mission Parkway. All right. The second project, or part of this review tonight is for site plan, and this is for facade revisions on the exterior of the building for the south facade. As shown in the photograph above on this slide here, in early October, staff noticed that the building was being painted without your review or staff's review as well. So it was blue prior and has currently mostly been painted red, what is the existing ephes material. A stop-work order was issued and they only have permit approval at this point for interior So I will review some of the improvements they are proposing at this time for the south facade. The majority of the brick exterior is remaining, but with some rather substantial entry feature improvements that they are recommending. This includes along the entry feature, two large columns, approximately 47 feet in height. We will note in the staff report, the maximum height in the commercial neighborhood district is 45, so this will have to be reduced. Also as well, again noting the red ephes being painted, they're also proposing to paint sort of this lower entry alcove area below what they are proposing to be a open on-in feature that's aluminum silver, and then the aluminum-coated columns that are blue, silver, and white, with the upper spires that they have shown as yellow. Those column features also include blue LED lighting wrapped around them at several points. Below sort of that entry alcove, they are proposing a checkerboard pattern, black and white tile, and then across the entire south facade, a blue LED light that's about halfway up the building wall there. And then extending the red ephes over to the, all the way to the eastern end of the facade behind that Family Fun Buffet sign. Staff is recommending some modifications to what's currently proposed for the site. We are concerned keeping with the commercial design standards is not consistent with the other tenant spaces in that shopping center. On the screen here, you've got everyone that's within that strip along the Mill Creek Center from west to east, so Hou-Ha, which was recently remodeled two years ago approximately, the Hobby Lobby that used to be, kind of in that middle space with Planet Fitness moving in there, all relatively consistent as far as colors, and as well as some sort of parapet or other architectural elements being added. And then towards the eastern end of the site, some of those smaller tenant spaces, again with earth-tone colors being added, some more natural wood- again with earth tone, um, colors being added, um, some more natural wood type elements, uh, that were added in there with, um, the blind box, uh, improvements to their facade, um, and these have all been undertaken within the last three years or so. Um, again, staff's concerned with, uh, some of the, that it's not consistent with the rest of the center, so we are recommending, um, some modifications to the proposed facade, um, including, uh, not allowing the red band to extend further east than the existing, um, red ephesus area, um, as well as, uh, limiting the blue LED light to essentially that, um, existing, um, facade area as well. Uh, and then just one more minor item as far as landscaping after doing a site plan review, um, there are currently, right now, you can see on the photo as well, uh, large trees that are directly adjacent to the building. Uh, we are, they are, have proposed due to the location of the Family Fun Buffet sign to, uh, remove the trees on the east side of the building. Um, if the Family Fun Buffet sign is approved, um, they will need to replace those with ornamental trees. Um, if it is not approved, we are recommending that they, uh, let those trees remain or require that they stay. So that is, um, staff's presentation.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? If you'd come forward and state your name and address, please.
Well, first off, thank you very much for hearing this. Um, my name is Mark Wessel. I'm CEO and founder of Springfield Sign. I reside at, for 825 East Carney in Springfield, Missouri. We're here representing America's Incredible Pizza Company, um, and the changes or the variances that they're requesting. I also have with me Don Potvin, uh, general, uh, project manager for this location that would also like to speak, and I'd be happy to let him just give us a simple narrative of Incredible Pizza, and then I'd be happy to address the sign issues if that's okay.
Very fine.
First of all, I want to thank the planning commission to take your time to look at our variance request. We're extremely excited about coming to Shawnee. We wanted to be in this market for many years, and the opportunity to purchase the Power Play location and move here was an opportunity we couldn't pass out, so we're very excited. We have 10 locations, uh, six locations, seven locations in the United States, two in Mexico. We're based out of Springfield, Missouri. We've been in existence about 16 years. We're an all-you-can-eat buffet type concept, but the game room itself is world-class. We have go-in-the-dark, go-kart rides, a brand-new system that will be installed here, indoor roller coasters, uh, brand-new bumper car systems. We're going to purchase about 120 brand-new games. All in all, the owners are going to invest about $3.5 million into this property to make it a world-class family entertainment center, uh, in this area, so we're very, very excited about coming to town. Our expectations are higher between 120 and 140 employees in this site and, um, really make it a place where families in, in this area would have a place to go and really enjoy themselves. Everything inside's new. It's going to be gutted and, and cleaned up, and the city has been great to work with in getting, uh, our permits together and all the work we have to do, and we really appreciate all the support. Um, the color schemes that you see here, I don't know if staff has it in their computer or not, I sent them sites of our other locations, so you could compare this to what our other stores look like, San Antonio, Texas, Memphis, Tennessee, um, Tulsa, Oklahoma, Springfield, Missouri. We have s- stores in all those markets. And the red facade, the red color and the logos and everything you see there, that is part of our branding. It's a very important part of our branding. So I just want to say, I'll let Mark kind of get into details and the questions with you on this, but I just wanted to tell you a little bit about us and, and what we're trying to do coming to town.
Thank you. Any questions for me? Any questions for this gentleman? If not, the other gentleman?
Again, thank you, and Lauren has been fantastic and has outlined the, the issues at hand very well, so I'm, I'll try not to go through too many of those details, um, again. We're basically seeking two variances. One is for increasing the size of the sign and one for moving what is otherwise allowed on the east facade. This particular property does have, uh, unique, uh, issues associated with it. On the east end of the building, which is the right-hand side, backs up to a higher elevation building lot, and within about 40 foot of the building, there's a 15-foot-high retaining wall, and on top of that retaining wall is another business. So from that point of view, the, um, value of having a sign on the east side is literally zero. Um, so we're requesting to, to move it. Um, with that request, what has to happen with respect to the codes here is that we, uh, have to conform to a 7 or an 8.75% um, um, calculation of square feet. So that naturally reduces the size of that sign that otherwise would be allowed on that, um, east side, and that calculation, if everybody remembers, about 20%. I think it would be allowed at about 341 square feet, and we're requesting, if the math is correct and my notes are correct, 270 square feet. So it's got an automatic, uh, reduction into, um, the calculations. Um, the, the trees would have to be removed on that side, um, which we're proposing that we have a landscaping plan that would have to meet the city's needs, and we understand going through that, that process. Uh, there have been some comments here that the, uh, look is unbalanced, uh, find that a, a little bit subjective in, in the fact that, um, um, personal opinions, I guess, I, I find this balanced with the trees on the left, the, um, band being extended to the right, um, kind of balances it. Um, to this point also, um, if, if we, uh, look at the, um, the pictures provided, being Hoo-Ha, and I believe it's called Blind Box Barbecue. Blind Box Barbecue is right next to this location. It also has a painted band to the right of the center entry feature. Um, it does not have a second sign, but obviously they're not on a corner with that driving lane that would allow the second sign. Hoo-Ha, Hoo-Ha, if you look at the other, um, end of the building, has done something similar in that they've painted, uh, the left-hand side, which goes all the way to the west corner of the building, out, and it also is a bit of an asymmetric design. So we feel like we're in the character of the building. Uh, we have been negotiating very, um, hard and long with, um, Lauren here, um, in trying to come up with a solution. Um, I believe it is, um, I'm overly familiar with your codes here, and I apologize, 5.64100, um, that addresses colors and that it's reasonable to, uh, request a variance based on color. As Don had stated, um, we are, um, a multi-state and a multi-location, um, operation, and to, um, that effort and the brand standards that have been created, they have been very, very consistent through the years. That consistency includes a solid red front, um, without exception. We also have more multiple columns, um, which go down the whole length of a typical building, and typically more signage than what's allowed here. So we feel we've come in with a fairly, uh, open mind to negotiate, uh, which again, thank you, Lauren, for all the, uh, participation in that. And we believe we're in the character of the codes, um, we understand it's bright, but we're appealing to children, uh, children in, in the family environment, which we'd welcome everybody to, uh, to experience. Um, from that point of view, um, let me check my notes here. I, I believe I'm, I'm standing to answer questions, um, and we'd be happy to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Wessel. Does the commission have any question for applicant or staff? Commissioner Peterson?
I know, I know the top is painted, but I'm, just would like some clarification. On the checkerboard at the bottom, is that going to be replaced with tile or is that going to be painted to look like tile?
Well, there would be, um, a laminate, uh, tile over the top, uh, there'd have to be, um, um, you know, a construction document showing how to do that, obviously, to make sure it meets approval, but it would be a, uh, ceramic tile that, that would, um, be presented there.
Any other? Any other questions for applicant or staff? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What you're presenting there, Incredible Pizza, is that drawn to scale?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Absolutely drawn to scale.
Engineer by training, and I'm quite, um, OCD about those things.
Mr. Wessel, you don't know me, but that's one of my really big things, that it has to be drawn to scale. That's the big thing with my staff, and they don't get it right. Thank you very much on that. Welcome. Any other questions for applicant or staff?
How is the owner, has the owner been approved all of this up at Strip Mall? Has he been fine with your?
Landlord, yes, ma'am. Um, that would be part of their agreement. But Don could probably speak to that a little bit more so than I could.
The landlord is the, uh, former owner of Power Play.
Yeah.
And, uh, we bought, we've gotten approval for this.
So is it, that building is separate from, separate owner from Planet Fitness and?
Yes, but those, those smaller units next to it, uh, the, the former owner of Power Play owns those as well up to Planet Fitness, so he owns all the, all those buildings plus this.
Because I know they just remodeled all that, that's why, you know, you've got your facade, um, you have the gray on the other end of Hoo-Ha and then, um, following out past Blind Box. So that all blends, those two buildings versus this one just kind of the standalone with the, um, colors and stuff.
Any other questions for the commi- Commissioner Rod?
I have a question for staff. Um, the existing space, was there a canopy on the east side? Is that no longer there or is that stay or? There's a, there's a east side entrance that one time there was a canopy there.
The blue fabric, it's, as far as I know, it's changed.
Actually.
Okay.
And then the second comment I have, I, so right now, our, we allow 535 square feet. They're over, obviously, by that percentage or whatever. So if that square footage on the both sides were 535, is that acceptable at that point or does that have to be one sign altogether?
So what we've done traditionally in the past with these types of variance requests is, um, require, if they're going to do two, then they have to meet, still have to meet typically whatever that code allowance is. In this case, they're asking for that extra size, but they, together, they can't exceed, if you're going to allow two, they can't exceed the 8.75%.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for applicant or staff? Commissioner Peterson?
One of the things noted here on the bottom is that the floodlights in the top of the column, and, um, I've seen pictures of other locations, and I do understand that you're, this is an interesting sight from the highway. At, at certain points, it's visibility is less, uh, but are those lights, do they meet? Are, I know we have recommendations for LED and vibrancy and what that does to traffic and, and those types of things. Are those LED lights compatible? The floodlighting? And those yellow spheres, I'm guessing?
So we did, um, part of our requirements for lighting, it does have to be, it would be steady illumination. Um, we've asked about the LED and they said that they're, um, arc shielded, so basically it doesn't direct light other places besides off-site, as far as the LED lights. That make sense?
We, we would, um, 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 I would like to share with you that typically, we do not do steady burn, but everything we've proposed here is steady burn. Um, it is all LED, there's no neon, um, no exposed direct bulbs. Uh, the lights that are up in the, um, top of the column that shines on the yellow spires, if you would be, they would be like three pencils just in a grouping, and down inside of what is the silver, um, expansion below that are two floods that just wash that yellow. Um, there's no direct exposure of that flood to the eye.
Thank you.
It just shines up.
Perfect.
Any other questions for applicant or staff? I have one question for applicant, Mr. Wessel. The Incredible Pizza, that will be a lit-up sign, in other words, that will have lighting behind it or in it?
The Incredible Pizza. Yeah. It is, all those letters on the front of the building are typical channel letters, which is a very common term in most sign codes. Um, they are all internally illuminated with, uh, LEDs, um, low-power, uh, great green, um, cause and, and environment. Um, the faces are acrylic, plastic with a trim cap, so it's, there's no direct lighting, it's an indirect with a cavity or the channel itself, like the letter I is flooded internally with white, so the light just comes through the, the faces. Hoo-Ha, the barbecue place are all made identically the same way.
Very fine. Thank you. They should be easily to see from Shawnee Mission Parkway then?
Well, I believe it can be seen, uh, yes. We do have, uh, the, that eastern side that's short and you can't really view it there. The setback distance is, is in scale with the size lettering. Um, everything unfortunately is, is relative, and the fact that you've got a setback reduces what otherwise would look to be a larger letter. You get closer to the row, you can normally just reduce the size of the letter as you come forward, but with that being setback as far as that property is, it, it's in scale to the building.
Very fine, thank you. Any other questions for applicant or staff? Commissioner Willoughby?
So I, I'm in agreement with the two signs, I guess, and I'm in agreement with even the 8.75, you know, but, uh, I, I still find that, that big swath of red is just a little too much. I mean, I, I don't know, it, either you put a, a six-inch, you know, at the top and at the bottom or, or right through the middle or something, but it just, it just seems too much for everything else that's in that area.
Any other questions for applicant or staff? If not, if not, is any, is there anyone from the audience who cares to comment on this? Seeing none, we'd, seeing none, then we'd be in commission discussion. Commissioner Wise?
I'm, I'm in agreement with the, uh, the red across the facade. I understand your other location, you know, the other locations are red, but part of the challenge too is just painting brick. That's an ongoing maintenance issue. I don't, I, I think the two reds are going to contrast, so, um, to me, I definitely agree, we need to keep the red just to the ephesus and try to keep that tile checkerboard, you know, low and relatively small scale, and then shortening the columns, I think. Overall, that would work and still provide plenty of visibility, especially the entrance with their, you know, branding concept.
You guys are nicer than I am, I know that, and I've always known that. I have a problem with that second sign because the second sign, although because it's on the, the side of the building and it's not visible and nobody'd waste their money putting it on the, if I believe it, if I remember correctly, the east side of it, still, Family Fun Buffet i- is more than advertising and a promotion rather than the name of the business, and, and to have that up there, just to me, we, they have a monument sign that they'll utilize, and to me, having that other sign up there just is, uh, I don't think it's necessary to grant that. If they keep the sign Incredible Pizza within what the, the limits are, uh, then I'm fine with that, but I don't like that other part of the sign being up there. And I'm sure somebody will agree with me. Now, I'm the lone stranger on this, aren't you? Commissioner Smith?
No, I was just asking for money.
So one other thing I'm disturbed at is that they were asked to stop until we went through this, they didn't stop. And that always concerns me when, when that happens, and maybe somebody didn't get the memo, maybe they, but that part of it makes me go, unless we, I'm sorry?
Can I address that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, please address it. If you'd step- Yes, sir, please address it, if you'd step to the microphone.
I apologize, Commissioner. Um, I, I'm the project manager, I instructed, uh, the crew to put a primer on that fascia, and left town for a week, and they primed it and painted it red, and so I take responsibility for that, we should not have done that, and we should have, we should have waited, I knew we had to wait to go through this process. It was a miscommunication, and I take responsibility, we were not trying to get ahead of the curve, it wa- it was a mistake.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. So we're still in commission discussion, and I'm just having a hard time voting for the second part of this, the sign, the Family Fun Buffet being out there. I, I just don't see it's a necessary part of it. Uh, the other two commissioners have weighed in on the, on the, the style, but as long as it's not above 47 feet, and as long as they keep the, what is it, the, the limited blue lights, the red, what, the red band, oh, and then the checkerboard. When I looked at the property out there today, that, there's an indent in there that slants in and in that, if that checkerboard is kept within that, then I don't think it's quite as loud, does that make sense to anyone? Please.
Yeah, on the other side, so what do you-
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Bingham. One other thing is, most of our sign codes were originally written, and we've updated them, but most of them were written before we had all these nice new materials and all this nice new lighting. And I think, you know, the, the newer lighting and the, and the newer materials they're using makes these signs much more visible from quite a distance, so I'm not always sure we need to increase the signage of it, the, the size of it, as much as the materials we're using are getting, um, getting the point across and being well seen from a distance, so, that's how I feel about it. Commissioner Roth?
So I'm curious, if we eliminate the Family Fun Buffet in the red, are we saying eliminate the blue LED as well, or can that stay in place as a kind of attraction piece to it?
I think what staff had to say, and, and I certainly trust Lauren and the staff on this, is if the, the limited blue LED lights can stay as long as they don't top out at above what the height the city has on that. So they would have to be taken down to a height that's below, I believe, 45 feet, is that right, Lauren? 45 feet, so if you limit them to 45 feet, they come down on that. If the paint is limited to the, what is already painted, with the exception of the Family Fun Buffet, the sign is not on there, and not painted, and then the checkerboard is limited on that inset in there, then that, to me, would say, we've given them some of the things that they desire without, without it being too abrasive. I'm looking for words that make sense, abrasive might not be the right word, it's too much at a distraction from the other businesses and the whole, building as a whole. And that, to me, would make sense. Commissioner Wise?
I'm just saying, I, you know, I think what you're indicating is, you know, with the other, you know, schemes, materials, things like that, it just doesn't quite fit in the character when you, when you go all out with the colors and the materials they've got.
Commissioner Peterson?
First of all, I, I understand branding, and I understand keeping everything together, and, uh, I think that's, there's others up here, too, that would love to do this, and, but at the same point in time, we have to keep some sort of uniformity. Uh, to clarify, if we were okay with basically the inset, which is the two spheres at the correct height, the red band stays, Incredible Pizza stays, and then the checkerboard stays within the inset, but it seems to be that what everybody has the biggest issue with is the red continuation to the east. Correct. Are you, is anybody okay with the Family Fun Buffet there without the red? So if you would remove the red band, that side, you could, they would be okay for the variance coming from the east side to that, those letters just being on the wall? Is another option?
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, I mean, I, I have to agree with Commissioner Peterson, I mean, here's the deal, we, we're in the business of hoping these folks will be successful. They are not, uh, in this local market to where they're a household name, and I feel like something that allows them to say more than they're just a pizza, pizza shop is, um, is, um, I think it's okay. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of looking at the same thing, Kathy, I'm thinking, lose the red band on the Family Fun Buffet, you lose the LED under it, now you have those as white letters, um, it's kind of a compromised situation, doesn't stand out too much, but yet it's visible enough to folks to see what they are, because there's a big difference between thinking you're going in a pizza restaurant and a Family Fun Center, and not to mention a couple million dollars. So that is, your suggestion is something I, I could support.
I'm certainly listening, listening, and I, I don't, I find your arguments to be very good. So Family Fun Buffet, you're okay with it being out there, but just not painted red, so that part of it, that building stays the same color as it originally was. It still gives them that extra sign up there, which I know they would never put it on the end of the building, and that makes some sense to me, that, but they'd have to cut down those columns to what the, the top of what the city says, and keep the checkerboard inside. Is everybody kind of thinking that's what would work for us? Does staff have any comment on what we're discussing? Is there anything we're missing, Lauren, that we haven't discussed?
Well, so, just kind of a couple of clarifications.
Please.
Um, the entry feature, we're essentially considering everything that you see, um, from the red over to the west side, the blue, um, so I just want to be clear, if you're saying within the inside, so you want to limit it between the columns? Okay.
Yes. Yes, that would make sense.
Basically, that 397.6 square feet area would be as it is depicted on the lower level. The difference would be the red band and the blue LED and the 270 foot, point one square foot. The red band and the blue LED would be dropped off, but they would be allowed to move that east side sign to that location. And I know that exceeds the percentage, but I think that, that's a, a decent compromise, and we're trying to respect the branding, but yet not totally jumping off the bridge.
And I think also in that, then, there's, there's comments in, in our literature that, that those trees would have to come down, so they would need to replant trees, and that's a part of it, too. So this is going to be a real challenge on making a motion on this, I can assure you. Any other comments? We're quick. Commission discussion?
Can I get, can I get clarification? I'm sorry, I have been silent.
Yes, Mr. Almond.
There's also an area of painted brick under here, and you're okay with painting the brick below?
That's that inset, isn't it, Doug? So that goes in and back, is that correct?
Correct.
Then that would-
You could see it in this original picture.
And that would seem to tie in with their sign up above, so that they would have some cohesiveness that way.
And then the existing ethos that's outside of the spires would be allowed to be red above. The purple basically turns to red, and then below the canopy, this area is checkerboarding red.
Correct. Okay. Then I don't think it'd be wrong to ask the applicant if he would agree with that. Sir, you're the applicant, Mr. Russell, or the other gen- and I don't remember your name, would you-
It's Martin.
-agree to what we're talking about, sir?
Yes, um, I understand the negotiations, I understand how hard fought all this is, because citizens on one side, businesses on the other side. Um, really want to commend you guys for what you have to go through day in, day out, I'm glad I'm the sign guy at this point. Um, the, the entry feature, to me, seems to be a consistent terminology here, so, you know, we would hope to have that whole projection, which are the two little 45s on the right and left, and, and the un, well, not, and the undecorated version, it's that little blue spot, and there's an equivalent on the right, um, to have that red band, the red banding is so important to the company. I can tell you, um, we've been doing these signs for going on 15-plus years, and Mr. Barzus is, um, a close friend, uh, business associate, um, we did draw this up with, uh, brown brick behind the Family Fun Buffet, and he was, um, very diminished and disappointed in that look, and that's why our negotiations with Lauren went a little stray towards that red band, because Lauren and I had had a lot of, um, discussions on this, and, and her presenting the Shawnee point of view, and us trying to present the Incredible Pizza point of view, and then obviously trying to find something in between, so I understand the dilemma you're in, I, our opinion would be that Family Fun and Buffet, and, and do appreciate, um, the, the gentleman's conversation in, uh, discussing this, um, one thing I did notice in the codes, too, that, and, and I just have to dig through these things, there's probably two more points, one is, up to 15 items is allowed in a sign. Um, I've kind of dug through and found out, so when we look at pizza, Family Fun, Buffet, those are really three items. Uh, the pylon sign does have, I think, some laser tag and go-karts, so there are more items out there, but the, the codes allow up to 15 items. The other thing, too, that, um, not to drive this home, and, and I, I, I just really respectfully want to say this, but the, one of the standard questions we have to answer in all the variances, um, has to do with, would this be, um, materially detrimental to the public welfare, welfare interest of property? Both the staff and us agree that this is not injurious to the, the, the general population out here, and I think that's pretty important to understand. Different, yes, but every one of us are different, we dress different, we drive different cars, I totally get it. You've got a beautiful city, and that's due to the architectural control in this commission and what you're doing, um, I have a lot of respect for that, but our branding is our branding, and we feel like without that red band, under that lettering, I know Mr. Barzus specifically pointed that out when we went through some variance to, to present, back to Lauren.
Very fine, thank you, I'll take that as a yes. So, would somebody care to craft that?
I don't think that would-
Well, I, I, then I, you know, the, the problem is, 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 I think we're trying to be as fair, we're trying to, trying to be as compromising as we can, and in essence, if the planning commission figures, I, it, that's what we determine we'll allow, then we vote it that way, and if they don't like it, then I think they can come back and petition us for something different. That's not a problem. I don't want to get up tomorrow morning and look at somebody in heaven and say, what the heck did you guys do last night? Of course, it happens, right? So if someone would care to craft a motion on, out of all this? Commissioner Peterson, thank you.
Unfortunately, since I, uh, suggested it, um, I think I'm stuck with this. Um, I move that we approve SP-29-19-11 and S-129-19-10 for Incredible Pizza at 1311 O West 62nd Terrace, facade revision and sign variance, that we approve the 397.6 square foot portion of the lower that staff has recommended, with the spheres being reduced to 45 feet, the red band, the blue LEDs, the checkerboard, all of that within that section, and should the applicant want to, Family Fun Buffet being moved from the east side to the front facade minus the red background. And the LED.
Is there a second?
If I can.
Commissioner Bingham?
Yes, sir.
The second by Commissioner Bingham? So, it's been a move for approval of SP-29-11 and S-129-19-10 Incredible Pizza, as per Commissioner Peterson's recommendations on the various parts of it. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried, thank you. Thank you, and welcome to Shawnee, we're glad you're here, and I hope that helps you out.
We're excited to be here.
Thank you.
Did you vote nay on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I thought I heard, I'm sorry.
Very fine. Next on the agenda is PUD-01-19-06, Woodsonia West, multi-family rezoning from PUDMR to PUDMR and preliminary development plan, 51 to 5300 blocks of Woodsonia Drive. Mr. Mark?
Good evening, Mark Zildorf, City Planning Staff. Um, bear with me, I'm going to read through a good chunk of this report this evening, just, um, I know you guys all have staff reports, but, so for the benefit of the audience here, they can have a better explanation of the project. The applicant proposes to construct a new multifamily and single-family attached town home development, uh, in the 5100 to 5300 blocks of Woodsonia on approximately 29.2 acres. The applicant seeks a approval of a rezoning and a preliminary development plan. The rezoning request is from PUDMR, Planned Unit Development Mixed Residential, to PUDMR. While the rezoning request depicts the same zoning district, a zoning process is required because the new preliminary development plan is proposed for this site. The proposed preliminary development plan includes 42 townhome units, and 14 triplex buildings, and 384 multifamily units, and 16 multi-story buildings. Just to give you a little background, as you're well aware, um, this application first came to the planning commission in July of 2019, it was requested on, uh, multiple occasions, and was last, uh, tabled at the October 7th meeting to this, uh, to hold a public hearing this evening on November 18th. PUD-01-19-06 is a request for approval of rezoning and a preliminary development plan. If the rezoning request and the preliminary development plan are approved, the applicant will be required to submit a final development plan and final plat- for approval prior to issuance of any building permits. The subject site is located in northwest part of Shawnee, uh, more specifically at the northwest corner of Woodsonia Drive and 53rd Street. The majority of the site is bounded by 51st Street to the north, Woodsonia Drive to the east, 53rd Street to the south, and K-7 Highway to the west. A small parcel included within the proposed development is located just south of 53rd Street, west of the recently constructed city fire station, and that would be this area right, this small area right here. To give you a little history of this site, uh, the site was originally, a rezoning request was originally submitted back in 1996 by J.C. Nichols Company. Uh, the governing body approved, uh, rezoning from agricultural to planned mixed residential. On September 9th of 1996, the approval was for the construction of a multifamily and townhome development that contained 330 multifamily units in 33 buildings, and 68 townhome units, and a combination of two, three, and fourplex buildings on 44.6 acres. The 1996 plan was not developed, and the property was eventually acquired by Rod Rock Homes. In 2002, Rod Rock Homes proposed a new development plan for the site, and rezoning from PMR to PMR was approved by the governing body for a- and rezoning from PMR to PMR was approved by the governing body for a townhome and single-family cottage development. This plan contained two hundred and twenty-four townhome units in fifty-seven buildings and a hundred and thirty-seven single-family cottage units on forty-three point seven acres. Shortly thereafter, the state of Kansas started to prepare plans for the interchange at Johnson Drive and K-seven Highway and this particular plan was no longer feasible. And then again, in two thousand and four, Rod Rock Homes requested a new development plan, uh, as a result of the possible right-of-way acquisition by the state. And in November two thousand and four, rezoning from PMR to PMR was approved by the governing body for a townhome development containing two, three hundred and fourteen townhome units and a hundred and, in one hundred and eleven buildings on, on the forty-three point seven acre site. This plan was never developed as well and seven point six acres of right-of-way was ultimately acquired by the state and a relocated gas pipeline use must significantly reduce the size of the site. The newly proposed development consists of two parcels, like I stated earlier. The larger parcel is twenty-four point five acres and is bounded by Fifty-fifth Street to the north, Woodsonia Drive to the east, Fifty-third Street to the south and K-seven to the west. And the smaller parcel consists of one point six acres located south of Fifty-third Street. And the smaller parcel is part of a larger overall parcel that is owned by the applicant. As far as the surrounding zoning goes, property to the east and to the north are zoned R-one. Here and here. Uh, and contain single-family homes within the Woodsonia subdivision. Property to the south is zoned Commercial Highway and PUD MR. The property zone that is zoned Commercial Highway is developed with office and retail uses within the Woodsonia West Center. A newly constructed fire station is located on a portion of the PUD MR zone property. The remaining portions of the PUD MR zoning district are approved for townhomes. However, the site remains undeveloped and is unable to be constructed as originally approved due to the new fire station and an upcoming daycare development at the northwest corner of Woodsonia Drive and Johnson Drive. And then right-of-way for K-seven Highway is located adjacent to the property directly to the west. And this graphic here shows the future land use map, the city's future land use map within the conferentive plan designate, designates the subject site as a mixture of high and medium density residential uses. The plan indicates the highest density occurring adjacent to K-seven Highway with medium density located to the east adjacent to Woodsonia Drive. The conferentive plan defines high-density residential uses as between ten and fifteen dwelling units per acre and medium-density uses are defined as between five and ten dwelling units per acre. The development has, this particular development has an overall density of fourteen point six dwelling units per acre with the denser multifamily units located to the west buffered by the less dense townhome units adjacent to Woodsonia Drive. Planning staff believes the proposed plan does comply with intent for the conferentive plan. As far as access to the site, primary access to this property will be from a private street with divided entrances on the Fifty-first Street and Fifty-third Street. So this will be the private street that serves the property. There'll be an entrance down here on Fifty-first and entrances on Fifty-third. There will be no direct access to Woodsonia Drive nor K-seven Highway. The rezoning itself should have little, if in any detrimental effect upon the surrounding properties. The denser multifamily units the denser multifamily units are located on the west side adjacent to K-seven Highway, which is a four-lane highway. The proposed plans place lower-density townhomes as a buffer between the existing single-family homes east of Woodsonia Drive and the more dense proposed multifamily buildings. Development is primarily self-contained with internal private streets and access drives. Access to this development will be limited to Fifty-first Street and Fifty-third Street with no direct access to Woodsonia Drive as previously stated. The city has reached out to USD two-thirty-two School District regarding the impact a development of this type may have on the existing schools. The district is aware of the project and indicated based on their projections of multifamily developments, they expect approximately sixty to seventy overall K-through twelve students with, because of the proposed project. Even without knowing which grade levels the anticipated students would be in, there is ample capacity at the school buildings east of K-seven without making any changes to school boundaries or existing homes. The school district has planned for this type of growth and has indicated it will not negatively affect their services. Traffic will increase with this development. However, according to a traffic impact study prepared for this project, which can be discussed later in the report, the staff, the street network adjacent to the proposed development is currently well under capacity and the extra traffic generated by the development will have little to no impact on roadway level of services as a result. Existing homes to the east will be buffered by the required thirty-foot peripheral boundary, which will remain free of structures. The townhomes are designed with two front elevations to give an attractive residential appearance from Woodsonia Drive. Black metal fencing with stone columns, iron and with stone cop, black metal fencing with stone columns and street trees around the perimeter of property will further enhance the street-side appearance of the property. The plan maintains nearly fifty percent of the property as open space and green space. Denial of their request would not appear to benefit the health and welfare of the community. The property has been zoned PUD MR for multifamily uses since nineteen ninety-six. Staff believes the proposed development conforms to the future land use guide of the conferentive plan by providing a desirable residential transition and buffer from the existing single-family homes to townhomes to multifamily buildings along K-seven Highway. The use of the planned unit development allows for a mixture of differing residential types while governing building materials and site layout to provide a more cohesive quality development. The development is a high-quality plan that provides a variety of, and mixture of housing stock as a unified cohesive community. And the multifamily uses add to an, an increase in population needed to help attract and sustain desired restaurants and retail uses. As far as the site plan, um, the site consists of, we talked about two parcels. Uh, the plat that the developer is proposing consists of three lots and two tracks. Lot one will contain eighteen point nine acres and will contain fifteen of the sixteen multifamily buildings and its associated parking. That would be in this area here. Lot two is located south of Fifty-third Street and contains one multifamily building and its associated parking. Lot three is adjacent to Woodsonia Drive. This lot contains the fourteen single-family attached townhome buildings. Track A is located in the northwest corner of Woodsonia Drive and Fifty-third Street. It contains a clubhouse, pool and retention water feature lake. And then track B is up here, um, is located north end and will contain a detention basin. As far as the architecture of the buildings, the multifamily buildings will be a mix of one and two-bedroom units ranging in size from seventeen hundred and, or seven hundred and seventeen square feet up to one thousand three hundred and fifty square feet. All buildings will have the same four-sided high-quality architectural design using the same materials and color palette that will vary based upon the topography of the site. The multifamily buildings will be constructed of durable building materials including smart lap siding, stucco, stone veneer, fifty-year composition shingles and metal railings. And the buildings will be predominantly of a gray color palette with gray and beige stone veneer and weathered roof, uh, weather, weathered wood colored roof. The majority of the buildings will be three stories in height on all four sides. The buildings adjacent to K-seven Highway will be, will either be three stories in front and four in the back or three stories in front and two in the back based on the topography. The multifamily buildings will have attached garages as well as detached carports in addition to open surface parking. And just to back up and clarify that, all the apartment buildings will be three-story in height. These two buildings down here will be three-story on the front side. And because of the top, topography that dips down, the backside of these units will be four-story in height, um, adjacent to K-seven Highway. This building here will be three stories on both sides. These four buildings here will be three stories along the front side. And because of the topography goes up, they will be two-story along the backside back here along K-seven Highway. This here's a rendering of one of the, the typical multifamily building. The townhomes are two-story in design with three bedrooms, two and a half baths, full basement and two car garages. Each unit is approximately fourteen hundred and eighty square feet in size. All the townhomes will be a similar design complementary to the multifamily structures using durable materials and a consistent color palette. The townhomes are designed with two front elevations. The units will actually front to the interior private street, um, although the applicant has, uh, so this will be the interior, this will be the front of the building that actually fronts the interior of the site. So it will front, this will be the side that you're looking at here with the garages. The rear of the home that faces Woodsonia looks like this. The applicant has actually taken the initiative to, uh, dress up the rear elevations that will, uh, face Woodsonia Drive. They're using architectural details such as a variety of building materials including lap shape, stucco and stone veneer. There's a use of covered patios, varying gable group lines and discrete door locations that all lend to the appearance, appearance of a quality facade from all angles. As you can see, this would be the front that you would see from Woodsonia. This would be the actual front of the building that you would see from, uh, the interior of the site. There is a clubhouse planned, uh, for the site near the pool. It's a two-story design with a similar palette of durable building materials and colors. Storm shelters will also be provided as required for the multifamily buildings. As far as amenities go, uh, the city's multifamily amenity policy suggests that multifamily developments over two hundred dwelling units provide four amenities, including what we call two-type A amenities as listed within the policy. The applicant is providing a large clubhouse, two-story in design, a pool and a cabana building. And minor amenities include a dog park, a patio area with a barbecue grill and a small pot lot. The retention basin located at the corner of Woodsonia Drive and Fifty-third Street will be oversized to create a lake. The clubhouse and pool will be integrated with the lake to create a significant water feature. There will also be a covered drive-through mail kiosk provided near Fifty-third Street entrance to allow convenient mail pickup and drop-off for the residents. And the development will be maintenance provided, including mowing, shrub trimming, snow removal and trash pickup service. And staff is of the opinion that these amenities are in conformance with the city's amenity policy. As far as area and bulk regulations, all area and bulk regulations and requirements have been met. This zoning district, uh, request contains twenty-nine point two acres and provides a land area of two thousand nine hundred and eighty-five square feet for each dwelling unit, which exceeds the twenty-eight hundred square feet area that is required. And that is not a building, that is not square footage of the living unit. That is, uh, a, a land area per unit that has to be met and may exceed that. All structures are set back a minimum of thirty feet from the property line, which meets the peripheral setback requirement. And all buildings meet or exceed the minimum twenty-foot setback from public and private street lights away. The minimum spacing of buildings are shown to be twenty feet or greater, which meets or exceeds the separation requirements. The applicant is requesting a deviation in the minimum driveway lengths for the townhome units. The driveway lengths by code are required to be thirty-six feet, six inches deep as measured from the edge of the curb to the garage door. The driveways serving the townhome units are shown to be a minimum of twenty-five feet in length. The planning commission can approve a shorter length if deemed appropriate. Each townhome unit will have two car garages and each dwelling unit will have full basement that allow for storage of items that typically take up the garage space. There will not be sidewalks on the driveway side of the street, which allows for full use of the driveway depth for parking. Also additional on-street parallel parking is provided nearby. Now, there are parallel parking spaces along this private street right here, um, for the use of the townhomes and/or the apartment, uh, residents. So all these factors which allow each unit to park full, four full-size cars per unit, which would be two in the garage and two in the driveway in addition to having the ability to utilize nearby on-street parking. And for these reasons, city staff is comfortable with the proposed shorter driveway length of twenty-five feet. As far as parking requirements, um, residential uses require two parking spaces per dwelling unit. That would, for the three hundred and eighty-four multifamily units, that would equate to seven hundred and sixty-eight parking spaces. This plan provides eight hundred and nineteen. And that's made up of a combination of surface parking, covered carport, heart, covered carports and integrated garage spaces. The required number of onsite spaces for the forty-two townhome units is eighty-four spaces. This, with the, uh, two-car garages, this provides a hundred and sixty-eight spaces, which is well in excess of what is required. Um, they also have the twenty-one on-street parallel parking spaces provided along Roberts Drive. As far as landscaping, landscape has, the applicant has provided preliminary landscape plan. Uh, the plan shows a combination of deciduous and evergreen trees dispersed throughout the site. Staff does acknowledge that the submitted landscape plan is very preliminary in scope and that substantial additions of tree shrub and perennial plantings are expected as part of the final development plan. Additional plantings will be required to meet the usable open space requirements, perimeter and interior parking lot landscaping requirements and foundation planting requirements. The final landscape plan must be provided with the final development plan. Park and recreational land use fund, this subdivision is subject provisions of SMC twelve point one-four, which is a park and recreational land use fund. Open space fees in amount of four hundred dollars per residential unit or one hundred and seventy thousand four hundred dollars, uh, will be due at the time the final plat is recorded or as the building permits are issued. Excise tax, this development is subject to provisions of SMC chapter twelve point two-six, which is excise tax on plating of your property. Estimated excise tax for this development is two hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. And that's a twenty-one and a half cents per square foot of platted area. The developer may enter into an excise tax abatement agreement with the city that would allow for the suspension, partial or unfold of the excise tax that is due, provided that the final plat is approved and recorded prior to the expiration of the suspension of the excise taxes set by the city. As far as traffic, I'm gonna do, briefly touch on this and if more questions are needed on traffic, I'll have our city traffic engineer get up and explain some of the finer details of that.
Thank you, Mark.
Phelps Engineering prepared a traffic impact study for the proposed Woodsonia development multifamily development. The study analyzed the expected traffic operations for the three proposed access points exiting the site as well as the intersections of Forty-seventh Street and Silver Hill Street, Woodsonia Drive and Fifty-third Street, Robert Street and Johnson Drive and Woodsonia and Johnson Drive. And just to summarize, instead of getting into all the details and numbers, the proposed Woodsonia West development is expected to add around a hundred and ninety trips in the AM peak period and around two hundred and fifteen trips in the PM peak period. The street network adjacent to the proposed development is currently well under capacity and the extra traffic generated by the proposed development will have little to no impact on roadway level of service as a result. Based on the capacity analysis in the study, no off-site roadway improvements are required as part of the proposed development. Just real briefly on some of the development engineering, uh, points, uh, there will be no public street improvements associated with this project. The developer has elected to construct Roberts Street as a private street to allow for the on-street parking. As far as storm drainage, the applicant has submitted a preliminary storm drainage study showing a conceptual grading plan, a drainage system, a drainage area map and a drainage table summarizing the hydrologic and hydraulic analysis for the site. The study is substantially complete and adequate for the purposes of reviewing the preliminary development plan. Stormwater treatment, this property, this project is subject to the provisions of SMC chapter eleven sixteen Stormwater Treatment. Chapter eleven sixteen Stormwater Treatment, which pertains to the implementation of stormwater treatment facilities to preserve and enhance the quality of stormwater runoff. This project is required to meet a minimum level of service of seven point one, based on the Shawnee Design and Construction Manual. The applicant is proposing the installation of native vegetation, bio-retention cells, infiltration basins, pervious pavement, proprietary stormwater treatment units, dry detention basins, and a wet pond to meet this required level of service. Stormwater detention, the applicant has submitted a preliminary stormwater detention study showing a conceptual layout of the detention facility, a drainage area map, and estimated storage volumes and allowable release rates. The preliminary study is substantially complete and adequate for reviewing the development, and any design issues discovered during the review of the final stormwater plan must be resolved prior to approval of issuance of final site civil plan. As far as recommendation, staff is supportive of the project and the efforts the developer has made in creating a quality multifamily plan that provides a variety and mixture of housing stock as a unified cohesive community. Staff believes the plan conforms to the future land use guide of the comprehensive plan by providing a desirable residential transition and buffer from existing single-family homes to townhomes to multifamily along K-7 Highway. The use of the planned unit development allows for a mixture of differing residential types while governing building materials and the site layout to provide a more cohesive quality development, and the multifamily dwellings create an increase in population, which is needed to help attract and sustain the desired restaurants and retail uses in this area of Shawnee. With that, staff recommends approval of Project PUD dash oh-one dash one-nine dash oh-six, rezoning from PUD MR to PUD MR, and a preliminary development plan for Woodsonia West Multifamily Development located in the fifty-one-hundred to fifty-three-hundred block of Woodsonia Drive, subject to the following eleven conditions. Approval of the governing body and publication of the rezoning limits. Number two, a final development plan and final plat shall be submitted for planning commission approval prior to construction. No building permits for the project shall be issued until a final subdivision plat has been approved by the city and recorded of the Johnson County Office of Records and Tax Administration. Number three, the buildings shall be constructed as depicted on the submitted building elevations, including architectural elements, building materials, and colors. Significant deviations from the general layout or architectural design shall require the area to be rezoned again. Number four, site improvements and project amenities shall be provided as depicted on the submitted development plans and detailed within the staff report. Number five, all streets, storm, and streetlight public improvements are required to be constructed in accordance with the final development plan for this development and the standards of the Shawnee Design and Construction Manual. Number six, all bulk regulations of the PUD MR zoning district shall be met. Number seven, and this is subject to the commission approving this, the planning commission approves a deviation allowing driveways serving the townhomes to be a minimum of twenty-five feet in depth as measured from the back of curb to the face of the garage door. Number eight, all site and building improvements shall be in accordance with two thousand, uh, two thousand, two thousand eighteen international fire code or as required by the city fire marshal. Number nine, the provisions of the excise tax shall be satisfied prior to obtaining the mayor's signature on a signature copy of the final plat. Number ten, open space fees, that the current open space fee in effect at the time a building permit was applied for shall be paid prior to issuance of the building permit. And number eleven, the applicant is responsible for obtaining all such permits as may be required by all federal, state, and local agencies, including but not limited to the City of Shawnee, Johnson County Environmental Department, Kansas Department Health and Environment, Kansas Division of Water Resources, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And that concludes staff's presentation of the staff report.
Thank you, Mark. Could I ask you to do something?
Yes, sir.
Could you turn around and turn the temperature down so it's a little stubborn?
Again? I know it is. It is. But it doesn't seem to be going down.
We're thinking we're in Miami right now, so we're okay. We're kind of having a vision of all this. Is it possible to open the doors in the back? Is, is Doug still here? Is there a way to, do you know if there's a way to prop those doors? We can't prop open, okay. We're just looking for a little fresh air, officer. Thank you, Mark.
It's not one to kick on.
Thank you, Mark.
Keep comments brief.
I'm sorry?
Just keep comments brief so we can get out of here.
Well, maybe that'll do.
I do have one request. Anybody that does come up to speak publicly, please sign your name and address on this. Thank you.
You forgot one part of it, legibly.
Legibly.
Legibly, that's a very important part. Is the applicant present? Could you come forward and state your name and address, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Pete Heaven. My address is sixty-two oh-one College Boulevard in Overland Park, and I represent Austin Properties, the owner of this property. Um, before I get started, well, first of all, let me say for the record, we do agree to all staff stipulations and would request the variance on the driveways, and so if there are any questions about that, I'll be happy to answer them, but before doing so-
Thank you, Mr. Heaven.
Thank you.
Please.
I know most, most of the people in this room tonight are concerned, and we've had a neighborhood meeting, we've explained many of the features of this project, and over the last few months, we've made changes to try to address those concerns. But what I'd, what I'd like to really start with is, we're dealing with a new breed of person who wishes to rent a dwelling as opposed to own one. We've all seen it, and we continue to see it. Those people are renters, if you want to call them that, as a matter of choice and not necessity. When I was growing up, I lived in an apartment because I couldn't afford a house. These people for a one-bedroom apartment will pay over twelve hundred dollars per month. For the, for the triplex, it's closer to two thousand dollars a month. So, we're dealing with a different type of person. That person also is interested in safety, neighborhood, uh, economy, schools, the same things we all were as we were growing up. They're the same people, they just prefer to rent as opposed to own. At our neighborhood meeting, we talked about schools. We went to DeSoto, we asked the schools, can you handle the kids? They said yes. No equivocation, we have the capacity. Traffic, we hired a professional traffic engineer. We said the level of service, which is the nomenclature that traffic engineers use, is an A in most cases and won't change with the additional traffic. We've been very careful to design this fifty-five million dollar project to push the traffic out to the north and south and not go toward the residential area to the east. It's all been very carefully designed. We asked, we were asked questions at the neighborhood meeting about maintenance, and what about all those triplexes that are gonna back up to Woodsonia Drive that I have to look at through my front door? Well, two come, uh, observations there. As you saw in the graphic, the elevation we have prepared actually shows a front on the back of these triplexes. They look like the front of homes. They'll be maintained by a professional maintenance company, all maintenance is provided. There won't be swinging sets. There won't be the fellow who likes his grass eight inches tall and the lady who likes her grass two inches tall. It's gonna be a nice uniform look. Plus, we're going to put up a wrought iron fence with stone pillars, the entire length of Woodsonia Drive. It's gonna be an attractive complex, an attractive drive. A lot of people had questions about density. You know, density is a relative term. Our property is fifty percent open space. Now, is it dense? Yes. Does the master plan call for density? Yes. Are we within the tolerances of the master plan and the code? Yes. The beauty to the project is, the multi-story buildings will actually serve as a buffer to K-7, noise barrier, and that is very important to the people, our neighbors to the east as well as our own tenants. The only thing I can't address that I, that we talked about at the neighborhood meeting is this concept of my property values are gonna go down. Now, I've been doing this for about forty years. I have never seen evidence that that's the case, but let me tell you this, if I were buying a home, I would much rather buy next to something that's built than a vacant field because I've seen horror stories from people who bought next to vacant fields. Are apartments appropriate for this area? Yes. Has the city said it's appropriate? Yes. For twenty-three years, this property has been zoned multifamily. I will make an admission, I was involved with Rob Rock on the two prior projects, and many of the people at the neighborhood meeting said, can't you build something less dense like the Rob Rock Plan? I'm here to tell you, the reason they weren't built was they couldn't be done economically. The density wasn't sufficient with the hurdles you have on this site to build an economically viable project without more density. So, that's what we've done. We've tried to address all the fears, we've tried to address all the concerns. The Preve family, Greg Preve is with Austin Properties, have built thousands of units in Johnson County, homes, duplexes, triplexes, apartments. In fact, Greg's father built most of the homes east of Woodsonia Drive that these fine neighbors now live in. So, we're committed to Shawnee, we have been for decades, and will continue to be. So, with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Heaven. Does the commi, does the commission have any questions for applicant or staff? Commissioner Peterson?
My, my first question is, um, the, the multifamily that is across Fifty-Third Street that kind of sits off by itself, is that a, is that a three or, what story is that? I know that it's kind of off to the side, but-
That's a three-story apartment building?
Okay. Is there, I know that we're building that Fifty-Third Street to come off of the end of that commercial, but the thing about it is, is what kind of crossing could anybody that needs to come over for mail or for, to use the amenities of the clubhouse, can you tell me about that section? I'm just curious.
I mean, in terms of access? Unavoidab, unavoidably, they'll have to cross Fifty-Third Street. There's really nothing, we looked at different ways to do it, there'll be a crosswalk, but in terms of a bridge or a tunnel, it simply wouldn't work.
Any other questions for applicant or staff? One question's for staff, and that is Silver Creek, which is on beyond Fifty-first Street. Is that correct?
Silver Hill.
Thank you all, I appreciate it. I need the help, you know? Um, that is an access road now. If this development is approved, is it already in the city's plan to do something because I believe there are no shoulders or sidewalks on that, it's a frontage road? Is that in the plan at all?
Kevin Manning, Transportation Manager. So, that section of road, all of our streets that aren't improved, the city's goal is to ultimately improve goals, and how long that's gonna take is another story. Um, that particular piece, there's some other things going on up at the interchange at Forty-seventh Street. So, on the K-7 corridor plan, Gata has a plan to eventually come in and put interchanges at Forty-third and Forty-seven. Um, they have a plan to do that, that was developed in two thousand and six, that will eventually happen, uh, but it, that'll probably be twenty, twenty-five, could be longer, years down the road. When that happens, the Forty-seventh Street interchange will be modified, and that frontage road, the alignment of that where it comes in will also need to be modified. So, what the city is probably not going to do is come in and improve that road when it would have to be come in and torn back out when they put the interchange in. It's, it's not a guarantee by any means, but it's, it seems likely to me that when that interchange came in, that frontage road would be improved as it was realigned.
Very fine, thank you, Kevin. Any other questions for applicant or staff? I have a question for the applicant. On, on the east side, there's not gonna be parking allowed on the east side of Robert's Street, is that correct?
That is correct.
And how will that be determined? Will you put, will there be signs there? And maybe this is a staff question, will be signs there or will they paint yellow on it? I guess yellow wouldn't be appropriate, but-
Signage marking that part of it, no parking?
Right, we'll be using signage. Okay. Another question is you, you're, and part of this is, is you've got a lot of detail in your preliminary site plan, and a lot of these come into focus, but I'm wondering on your, your compactor and your area for the trash, uh, will that include recycling?
Yes.
Any further question? Commissioner Rod?
I had a question on, he said there was a discussion with the DeSoto School District. Could you elaborate on what that discussion was and how you all arrived that it wouldn't impact the school district?
Actually, the staff conducted that interview with, with the school district.
The staff?
But we did give the school district a copy of our site plan so it could see how many units we had, uh, the number of bedrooms in each unit. They did the calculations from there.
Could someone elaborate more on that, like with the discussion, how that played out and?
Uh, city reached out to, uh, the superintendent of the DeSoto School Districts and asked them if they were aware of the project and what concerns they had and how it would impact their, um, their schools in that area, and they replied back with the information that I shared in the report this evening.
Any other question for applicant or staff? Thank you, Mr. Heaven, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Heaven.
At this point in time, if anybody from the audience wished to make comments on that, we'll address them. Before, let me read something to you. Your comments are limited only to the matter under current consideration. I kindly ask that your comments be concise, that you are respectful of all parties. If your comments are the same as previous speakers, then please be brief. We are not, we have not established a time limit, and we prefer not to. If you are not making any specific point or long-winded, I will ask you to speed it up and eventually may ask that you stop. We really want everyone to, to be able to talk if wants to, so if you'd like to talk, please come forward, state your name and address. Great, sir? If you'll state your name and address, please, and write legibly on the sheet there.
All right. Thank you, folks. Patrick Fitzgerald, two-two-six-one-three, West Fifty-Third Place, uh, basically right on the corner. I can see the fire station from my front yard, so just to give a committee parallel where we're at. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the committee. My name's Patrick Fitzgerald, I'm a homeowner of a property within the designated two hundred feet of the proposed development we're here to discuss this evening. Uh, come today, today in opposition of this proposed site plan. Uh, in our city's comprehensive plan, the primary goal states that it was written to achieve an efficient, effective, and responsible, or a responsive planning process dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for all citizens. In addition, it also states that the residential development should create planned developments with a variety of residential living styles that are used within a development or when it's advantageous due, or when it's advantageous due to topography rather than merely to increase density. Uh, this, this proposed plan is in direct violation of both city codes and the comprehensive planning guidelines. Uh, if you view the comprehensive guide, Land Use Chapter Five, page thirteen, it says specifically that this is zoned medium residential, uh, in the comprehensive guide. Uh- Uh, this body, in fact, has approved, uh, I would say, three different versions of this plan, um, all of which, which were less than ten units per acre, which is something, is someone who lives in this area, I, I would support one hundred percent. Um, we're not, you know, m- me myself, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be able to build something on this land, but every previous piece or site plan that's been approved for this body has been less than ten. Um, city code for planned unit development communities of mixed-use residential designation state that structures are to be no more than three stories in height. Uh, the proposed site plan includes buildings of three to four stories. Uh, the comprehensive plan also calls for consistent development within the community. Uh, there are no other existing structures more than two stories in direct sightline of this proposed development. Uh, these structures of three to four stories actually meet the city code guidelines, uh, that I was reading in the high-rise apartment building jurisdiction, which is not classed in as what the HUDMRA is, which anything, uh, three stories or more was to classify. And again, this is all new to me. I just, I just live here, but I have been doing a lot of reading in the past seventy-two hours, so I, I appreciate you humoring me. Um, you know, within the HUDMRA developments, the high-rise developments also require a minimum unit size of eight hundred square feet, which even if this was a high-rise, would not qualify because there's units as small as seven hundred and seventeen square feet. Uh, in addition, this new plan submission is also, uh, from what I was reading in contradiction with several of the bulk codes, which I can go into if there's questions, but planned you develop, uh, planned unit development rezoning code that I read was a minimum square foot, or lot square footage of three thousand three hundred and thirty-three square feet per plan. From this packet, it shows that it was twenty-eight hundred square feet, which I have questions about that. Um, I'm not only in opposition of this development happening on this land, I, I am not in opposition of development happening on this land. I am, however, in opposition of development in violation of preset guidelines and code regulations, just for the sake of adding addresses in our zip code. Uh, as a committee, your role is to ensure the security of Shawnee residents, ensuring that planned development proposals are within the guidelines set by our comprehensive plan and city codes. I hope you will see today that this plan submission does not meet the definition, uh, mission of your committee. I hope that you join me and, and do not recommend this plan as it is proposed today. Uh, again, that land use guide was chapter five, page thirteen, specifically says it. I don't know if you guys have notes to see that, but, um, I thank you for your time. I know there are a lot of the people who wanna speak, so I'll let them speak. Um, but again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
My name is Jason Keeler. I live in the Crystal Park subdivision. It is adjacent to Woodsonia. We are a few blocks from Woodsonia Park. My address is five-two-two-one Roundtree Street, Shawnee, Kansas, six-six-two-two-six. I just wanna talk about some basic math here, real quick. Close to four hundred and fifty units on less than eighteen, less than twenty-eight acres of land, you're looking at between eleven hundred and twelve hundred people potentially. Now, even if just a quarter of those are minors age sixteen or under, you're getting close to three hundred students, not sixty. When you look at the wonderful schools, which are the backbone and cornerstone of our community, two things impact the quality of an education more than, more so than anything. Student to teacher ratio and the amount of space per student. Those are suffering. I can see that in my, in my children's school right now. You're also looking at adding three hundred to five hundred vehicles in this space. And although it's fantastic that there's some outlet points, all that traffic is still going to have to con, con, convene in two very tight areas here. You know, it will create a lot of problems that aren't really being addressed. It's generally accepted that population density equals more rooftops, more chances to attract employers, et cetera, et cetera, even if it means forcing families into, into triplexes as a means of value. With that said, I think there's a middle ground between the current undeveloped space and what the developer has proposed in this plan. We can create sustained growth for our city without suffering so many people in that space just for the sake of rooftops and tax income. In conclusion, it's true this plan fix, fits the technical qualifications of HUDMRA. However, if it's an, it's extreme use of that classification at near fifteen per, previous plans at ten per were, were far more equitable. And my final point, I collected nearly sixteen hundred signatures of area residents that were in opposition of this plan in its, in its preceding plan. I would hope that, as a, as a group, you could take into consideration existing homeowners who are impacted by this, and at least consider that there's that many people that don't want this type of density. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Keeler. All right. I understand how everyone out there feels, but if you'd let us continue to get through this without the extra clapping and cheering, I'd appreciate it very much. Please, sir, if you go ahead.
Yes, good evening. My name is Kurt Nappam. Um, I live at two-two-one-one-nine Clear Creek Parkway in Shawnee. Um, I'm also the recently elected incoming Ward Three City Councilperson out in Western Shawnee. Um, I wanna start by thanking you guys for your service. I know it's a thankless job and many late nights. Um, also, I hope you, I'm sure you've noted, uh, how many people are here tonight, in spite of the fact that Preve requested that this be pushed off multiple times, in spite of the fact that it's a night of a Chiefs game, in spite of the fact that it's the last agenda item, and in spite of the fact that it's nearly ten o'clock. Um, still, we have extra seats going out into the, because it's so important to our residents. Um, so I'll just say, I stand for good growth, and I know we all do, in development in Shawnee. Um, but I will say that now that I've heard the comments from Preve, um, as I've gone to the neighborhood meeting a few months ago and listened to the city staff, I have serious concerns, as I think many of us do. Um, I know that you're well aware that you guys have a lot of power. The seven of you represent sixty-five thousand people of the city and sixteen thousand, more than sixteen thousand in Ward Three, out in Western Shawnee. And, uh, I would just ask that you ask the hard questions, um, and address all of these concerns. Um, to be clear, the zoning for this project is not in question. It's been zoned multifamily, multi-, uh, for many, many years. Um, but there's never been a plan that's dense that's been proposed, which is why they've got to come to you and get extra approval. Um, so you definitely do not have to approve this. Um, I will, let me shorten my comments. In particular, the following questions that I, I'd ask that you fully vet and ensure you are, you're completely comfortable with. Um, number one, how are our schools gonna handle this extra burden? I'll be honest, and I appreciate Commissioner Ross's question. Um, having kids that have gone through the district, being, uh, very involved in my family in the PTA locally, um, and still being involved, my family in the grade school, um, they would feed into, I don't believe that's true, that it can handle. Uh, Mill Valley's packed, Monticello Trails is packed, Curry Ridge is beyond packed, and that's the school that would be directly impacted. Um, number two, has the city conducted its own traffic study? I know at the time of the neighborhood meeting, it had not. Um, I think we have real concerns about traffic issues in that area, um, for multiple reasons. Number three, are the amenities that have been promised, uh, are they cemented in the plan? Um, you know, too often the developers, after seeking, it was mentioned tax abatements even, um, amend their plans and they reduce the number of amenities that are in there. We saw this happen just last week at the city council meeting regarding the development over off Seventy-Fifth Street. Um, so it asks that that be a major consideration, cementing those, that plan so that it doesn't get revised later. Um, regarding possible tax abatements, I actually appreciate that they're not asking for a TIF if it doesn't appear. Um, but I, I don't know why we'd even consider tax abatements, considering that the vast majority of people in that area don't even want the plan. Uh, and finally, are there guarantees that, that it's not gonna be sold off shortly after the building? This happens a lot with department communities. Um, I'd wanna know that Preve's in it for the long haul. So I do wanna be clear in response to, um, the, the gentleman that spoke on behalf of the development. It's not about the type of people. We welcome everyone in Shawnee. It's about the number of cars. It's about the number of, uh, people. It's about the number of students, et cetera. It's about the density. And finally, I just remind you, and then I'll, then I'll be done. Uh, there's no hurry for you to accept this as is tonight. If you have any concerns, you should table this for a future date. In fact, this should not be decided by the current council. Um, this issue has been continually tabled by Preve, hoping the public interest would wane. Um, and, uh, so again, it's been tabled multiple times. Um, and I would say, I would submit that, and I know you won't ultimately decide when it's put on the council agenda, but this really should be decided after the next city council, um, is seated, which is only six weeks from now. Um, a, a, a decision of this magnitude should not be rushed through, so I'd encourage you not to rush it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nappam. Next person, please. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Dan Renaud, R-E-N-A-U-D. I live at fifty-four oh eight Amendis Street, there in Shawnee, um, in Woodsonia. Uh, moved there over twenty-three years ago. And we got word that this was happening twenty-three years ago, okay? And for those who've been around that long, you know your property values got soft until it's finally pulled back. Remember that for those old people that were around. The same thing's gonna happen here. We've got a lot of people that's been with Woodsonia that long, and they've sunk their money into their houses, and they love being, living there, but they've got a big investment they can't afford to lose. The petition that was talked about, where over sixteen hundred people signed, declining this idea is important. That shows how strong it is against, and that's partly because of the density and all this kinda thing. My math is not as good as some, but the way I heard it was four hundred and twenty-six units, right? If that's two per unit, right? That's four hundred, what, four hundred and forty-eight? Excuse me, eight hundred and forty-eight. Fifty-two. I, I didn't do too good in math. Anyway, that's if just two people live there. What happens if they sublet a second bedroom or a third bedroom? What's that gonna do to traffic? We tell, I heard somebody say a thousand, twelve hundred, or fourteen hundred. That's a whole lot more than what you're bargaining for. I came to this commission over the Hy-V store that was going in at the junction of Johnson and Woodsonia. And I conveyed to you then, and I convey to you now, we have a traffic problem. We were promised a lot with that turnaround on how well it would do and create traffic flow. And as I've said many times, it's done that because it is taking cars off the street that wreck in that traffic zone. Okay? Today, if you go down Johnson Drive or Shawnee Mission, between six o'clock in the morning and eight-thirty in the morning, it is bumper to bumper. The same thing is true with Shawnee Mission. And in the afternoon, it's even worse. I dare say we've got more traffic in the afternoon on Shawnee Mission than what's on four-thirty-five at times. We can't get rid of this traffic. And when you put that many more people in this dense area, which they're asking for twenty-five minimum driveway length so they can park four cars, they're not doing that to have fun. They're knowing what's gonna happen, and they're trying to keep cars off the streets, okay? Traffic is gonna go up. As I said the last time I was here, I applaud your efforts of putting in the fire station. That was a good thing for Woodsonia, but don't hamstring us. Most of the calls come at those rush hour times, any AM and PM. If you don't believe it, go ask them. And they're mostly traffic instances, okay? If you've got that many more cars trying to get onto Johnson from Woodsonia, or for God's sakes, even worse, going to Forty-seventh Street, you're gonna impair the movement of those fire trucks. There's just no way of getting around it. Who's gonna suffer because of that? I asked a question to you, sir, at your meeting greet. You don't remember me. Maybe you do. Yeah, I imagine you would. Sir? Yes, sir. You're addressing the committee up here. Okay. I, I asked him a question, okay? My question was very simple. Was there gonna be any tax breaks for this? Oh, no. There won't be any. And now what I heard at night is telling me that's not quite true. Who pays the taxes for these kids that go to school? It's not the renters. It's the homeowners. And we don't need that extra burden, especially the older people. I'll leave you with one comment, and this is not a threat. You know, if you look at the density in these pictures, you see how dense Woodsonia is, and you see how dense this apartment complex is, okay? We know what's gonna happen. We see crime coming from Missouri to Kansas. We're seeing crime coming from KCK to Shawnee. It's gonna happen. We don't have to encourage it. We are all out in Woodsonia and in this area in, in Ward Three, homeowners, for the most part, lion's share, okay? Not a threat. We are also voters. And I'd like to convey that to the city council as well, because this is important. We're getting kinda sick of this kinda stuff. That deal with the, uh, rec center got turned down by seventy-two percent because nobody wanted it, and it was pushed hard. I'll leave you with that. I think it's too dense. I think it's gonna cause problems. They don't have the skin in the game by owning what they're living in. If those were approachable buildings, purchasable town, townhomes, I'd be real happy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Renaud.
Hello. My name's Gerald Ritter. I live at fifty-twenty-five McCoy Street, which is on the corner of Fifty-first and McCoy, approximately four blocks from the intersection of Fifty-first and Woodsonia East. Um, I'm very concerned about the density, and I will explain why. Um, first of all, uh, got seven hundred and sixty-eight parking spaces plus overflow totaling eight hundred and nineteen possible vehicles. Planned development has two exits, one in and, I mean, two, two ways to get in or out with a nice straight road all the way through the interchange, in, through the development, which basically allows people to go whichever way they want. They're gonna go path of least resistance. So, nothing in the traffic study talked about Fifty-first Street. So, yes, you've got Fifty-first Street there, but what about Fifty-first Street going east all the way to Monticello Road? That is gonna be a major thoroughfare for this intersection, for this development. And the reason why is, again, path of least resistance. The schools are on Woodson, uh, Monticello Road, Forty-seventh Street. What's the easiest way to get there from there? Oh, I'll just pop on Fifty-first and shoot straight up to Monticello Road, and then go whichever direction I need to go. Where is the traffic study that talks about Fifty-first Street? It's nonexistent. It needs to happen. Second issue, so, um, so if you talk about, the study says, uh, twenty-four percent of cars will move in the AM and twenty-seven in the PM. Um, have any of you been around a major apartment complex? Have you been there at night, and have you been there during the daytime? The cars are gone during the day, and they come back at night. How are they gonna get there? You need to answer that question in detail before you approve this plan. So assuming that the traffic, so you've got Roundabout Hell on one end, going into Fifty-third Street, going out into the Roundabout- going into 53rd Street, going out into the roundabout, which, living on 51st Street, I can tell you, traffic has picked up through our neighborhood since those roundabouts were put in. And I firmly believe it's because of those roundabouts. People just don't like that. It's a very confusing and frustrating interchange, and you go in, you may not come out alive. So if you figure, so I'm figuring 60% of that traffic in that development is gonna go down 51st Street. Because, gee, why deal with Roundabout Hell when I got a straight shot to Monticello Road? If that happens, so let's assume 60%, and you assume the 25, 27% that they talk about in the study, that's 132 cars per day. I think that's very low. More realistic numbers of 35% would equal 172 cars. That's the 60% that would go down 51st Street. To get to numbers like 50%, that's 245 cars going down 51st Street. So if you add that to the existing traffic, you're talking well over 300 cars a day possibly going down 51st Street, which has families with kids playing in their front yards in Woodsonia, which goes up the hilltop, and then Oakmont, which goes on over to Monticello, Monticello Road. And also, if you've never traveled down 51st Street, you might notice there's a slope. Starts at the top of Hilltop and goes down to Anderson Street. That's a great speed ramp for cars coming through there. I sit, my house is pretty much right as that's coming down almost to the bottom. And on a daily basis, I keep, see cars going through there at 45, 50 miles an hour in a 25 mile an hour zone. What are we gonna do when that's 300 cars? So in order to safeguard our neighborhoods from this extra traffic and potential unsafe conditions, I'd like C-51st Street exit taken off the table completely. Or force traffic to go west on Silver Heel and force them to go out to K-7. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Mike Capaneri, and I live at 22412 West 52nd Terrace in the Woodsonia subdivision. I brought my family out to Kansas City about seven years ago from the Washington DC area, and just cannot say enough great things about the community that we live in, the neighborhood, all the way on down to the street level. We've just made a lot of great friendships, and I'm just live being out in Western Shawnee, which, growing up in Connecticut, I never thought I would be saying these things about living in Kansas, but life takes you in different directions. So I'm here tonight, along with, I think, the vast majority of my friends here in opposition to this Woodsonia West family, multifamily development. Ultimately, I believe that this development would have a negative impact to the surrounding properties and overall would have a negative impact to the health and welfare of the community. I'm not gonna belabor a lot of the points that were brought up earlier. I agree very much with traffic concerns, the density concerns. I do wanna bring up a point with regards to need. There really is an abundance of affordable multifamily housing units in the near vicinity. Just to the west of K-7, as it was discussed earlier, there are units, and that's about a mile away. If you go a mile and a half in the other direction to the east, the woodland townhomes, there's units there. And for what it's worth, admittedly, this is purely anecdotal, but as I go back and forth between where I live and those woodland townhomes, multifamily housing units, my jogging route, which I probably should do a better job of being more diligent with, but it takes me past there. And over the five-plus years that I've lived in Woodsonia, there's probably been a handful of instances or so in which I've noticed police activity, and take it for what it's worth, but it seems to be in that vicinity. There's always ads on the marquee as you enter those townhomes looking for renters. They're trying to bring people in, offering discounts. So it seems like there, that there's plenty of opportunities in the area for renters with multifamily that are currently in existence. With regards to parking, I can tell you that, again, this is admittedly anecdotal, but parking in that area is an absolute mess. I mean, it's strewn with cars all over the place. From a public safety perspective, I can't imagine how law enforcement or fire service operating heavy equipment would have to navigate that nightmare. And I'm not saying it's a one-to-one parallel, but it's certainly a concern, and I agree with a lot of other previous speakers who brought that up. And then, lastly, I do wanna reinforce the point with regards to education. I did look over the staff report that the gentleman read earlier, and quoted from it directly, said that there would be, again, this is the city connecting with USD 232, the school district, and the report says that there would be, quote, "be no need to make any changes to the school boundaries for existing homes." And that's just something that, at face value, is hard to digest. Just seeing, so I've got a fifth grader, a second grader, another one soon to be entering the schools, and as it was brought up earlier, as Mr. Nappin mentioned, I mean, the schools are bursting at the seams, the elementary schools, the middle schools. So a statement such as that, I would want additional information as to who that came from. We'd have liked to explore that topic a little bit further, just because at face value, it seems really hard to swallow. And in closing, I would just mention, Mr. Chairman, as you were dialoguing earlier in the meeting tonight with regards to the signage of the car wash, there's a phrase you said, "out of character for the neighborhood", and I think that aptly sums up what this development would be. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capaneri.
Hi, my name is Lisa Michi-Lawson. I live at 22413 West 53rd Street. And first, I wanna thank you all for being here late and taking the time and giving your full attention to every one of us that is feeling passionate to speak. You asked us to be brief, and so I do have just three points. As I make my points, I'd like you to consider that the applicant, his job is to sell you on this proposal. And I think he's done a nice job on trying to sell you. I will use some of his own words as I make my points. He said that density is subjective, and he's focusing on the green space that he will leave us with. Per the planning commission's report, I would say that density is not subjective. You talk about dwelling units per acre, and we've already had people speak and mention that previously those were approved at 8.9, 8.3, and most recently, 7.2. The current plan more than doubles our last approved plan. And that is why you're seeing so many people out here. It's not subjective. It's a huge amount of people for a small amount of space. I would ask you to consider if that is in line with what's good for Shawnee. The other thing I would ask you to consider is the traffic study. People have mentioned this already. The applicant said that they have design in place that pushes traffic to the north and to the south. I would ask, what is that design? Because if you look at the picture that's on the screen, that design is contained to the space that they own. They've suggested there will be no changes necessary for the city streets, as if that's a good thing. But if you look at the intersections, they're suggesting people are gonna go to the intersection from 53rd Street and turn towards Johnson Drive to wait at a stoplight. That's where they looked at their traffic study. They didn't look at how many people are gonna go straight through on 53rd Street, which, as someone mentioned, is a path of least resistance. I would implore you to please take your time, do your due diligence, and look at a traffic study that looks at what that does to the neighborhood. It could be something as simple as speed bumps and signage that could save a child's life in that area. So please don't rush that decision, and please do your due diligence to do your own traffic study and not just take the one of the applicant that's selling this for us. The last thing I would ask you to consider, and not many people have mentioned this, but the landscape plan. It's preliminary, and I quote from the planning commission, "it's very preliminary." There's been plenty of time since when this first came to you in July, after the many, many delays, to make it not very preliminary. When I asked at the open house, which I did attend, they told us that they would meet the minimum requirements. The minimum requirements are trees about this tall. If you look at the pictures that are in the plan that they're using to sell this, they show huge, fully-developed trees that would provide a lovely buffer between the development and the homes. That is not gonna occur for 10 to 15 years. So I'd ask you to please be mindful in looking at the plans that are being sold and consider both sides. What's good for the people that are currently living there, and what is the best growth? I think you're gonna hear from a lot of people that we're not against growth, but we do ask that it be mindful and good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson.
Hi, my name is Susan Kurtow. I live at 5010 Woodsonia Drive, Shawnee, Kansas 66226. My house is the corner house on Woodsonia and 51st. And at the open house, I had brought up a concern about the 51st Street exit, the headlights coming out of that complex shining right into the neighbor right behind me in that little quadripack cul-de-sac there. That's something I would urge you to consider. Without traffic at that intersection, when K-7 was being developed, all traffic that wanted to go north had to come past that intersection. The old red light was closed down to build the bridge, et cetera. Traffic, and there was a four-way stop, and that worked well. They've taken the two-stop signs down, it's just a two-way. I can tell you, every single day, I don't know what age group it is, but I'm assuming it's more teens or lower 20s, try to make it a game as crossing or not stopping at that stop sign. And at least once a week, from inside my home, I can hear wheels screeching of an accidental avoidance there. And that's with current traffic patterns. I just want you to consider the hundreds of cars that will be parked and will be picking what entrance they come through. It's a nice street, nice straight line, but that nice straight street from 53rd and 51st are the nice triplexes. The other people that are in the apartment complex have to meander their way through all those traffic bays and people backing in and out of parking spaces to get to those exits. I had asked if that 51st Street exit ramp could be brought down a little bit to where some of that green space is, because there's not four homes just parked right there where the headlights will be coming in and out, and out. And that was declined. There was not gonna be any changes made. So that's traffic density. I'm not gonna go over that. I have a couple other things. I am, the construction of the multi-unit dwellings, which are the apartment complexes, it talks about all the outside, and they look beautiful. What is the construction of the firewall and the soundproofing? Are these gonna be low-quality apartment buildings? Are they gonna be low-grade? Are they gonna be deluxe, high-end, where they're soundproofing? You can't hear your person closing the closing door next to you. And if they're low-grade, are they gonna be turning around every year? That was another question I have. I always have a question, because it's not in the plan at this point, is light pollution. That's the size of two shopping centers? I mean, imagine the light pollution from those. I am concerned about that, living so close within 200 feet of the property. And parking? I would request, no matter what is the final plan is approved, that on the east side of Woodsonia Drive, that the city of Shawnee puts up no parking signs to prevent parking and clogging of Woodsonia Drive, especially with the fire department who travels that way. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Evening, Council. My name is Tony Gillette. I live at 21613 West 60th Terrace. I live across from Mill Valley High School, actually in Ward 1. For the folks in the room here that might not know, Ward 1 goes from Mill Valley all the way to I-35, because the council screwed that up a couple years ago. That's another issue. My issue on this complex, I want to bring, density is the thing you've heard over and over. I'm not gonna beat that horse for you, but I agree. It's way too dense for what we need in this neighborhood. I moved here 25 years ago because I wanted to be in a neighborhood of single-family homes. That's what we have here, single-family homes. We send our kids to the schools that are close, that they can walk to or ride a bike to. That's why I've remained here in Kansas City for 25 years and have not moved on to a bigger community. I wanna stay here. I wanna give you two pieces of anecdotal evidence. I'm about 55. I sent my last kid to college in six months. And I'm looking to downsize my home, believe it or not. Too big for me. I'm getting a little too old for all this extra work, doing leaves, tired of leaves. I would love to stay in Shawnee. This has become my home. I expect my children to go to college here and come back and find employment and live right here in Shawnee. So I would like to find a next step down option. We don't have that here in Shawnee. My in-laws just moved from South Dakota here to Western Shawnee, to the town and country on the other side of K-7, because they found a wonderful place to retire to that's a single-family or single-level structure, something without stairs. I know that's not exactly what this plan would be, but they also moved out of a condo complex that had a two-car garage and two bedrooms. Other units had three bedrooms. I think that's the type of density that I think most of the folks in the neighborhood would be not opposed to. So this is way too dense for what we have here. I strongly urge you to reconsider it and really bring something that I think fits better into this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Oh, I'm about frozen up here now. Could you shut the door? We're getting soft up here. We've gotten cold now. Yes. Please, sir, go ahead.
Yes, my name's Salvatore LaBordia Galbaccio. I live at 22601 West 53rd Street. I've been to every one of these hearings since '96, not to the planning commission, just to the city people, because they're the ones that make the final decision. However, I've been told, I was told that there would, when I came to the planning room downstairs, I was told that the city planning staff have no say whatsoever on whether to approve or not approve a project. Yet I'm seeing that this one's approved, and the other one wasn't. So I don't understand that part. They do have a vote, apparently, at least to a high level of recommendation. You yourselves are the ones that make the decision if this goes forward to the city council. The Rod Rock Plan from, that had the cottage homes, was probably one of the more lower-density projects. The main feature of that one initially that I liked, he said it was a San Francisco plan. I don't know where the hell it came from, but that's what he said. So I'll take him for his word. He, and he deemed that feasible at the time. And he stated to me clearly in our city park, when I was standing there listening, talking to the then-neighborhood association director, that his goal was to make $60 million off that property across the street. So, at a lower density, I'm assuming at that point in time that he was comfortable that he was gonna make $60 million somehow. I don't know how, but that's what he suggested at the time. So, the thing is, is that those cottages were initially provided to the city council through you guys, not you, but the existing team at the time, that, in fact, they would be owned. They would not be rentals. Later, and I don't remember any sign coming up along any streets anywhere saying, "we're gonna change it because somehow through the back door", I don't know how it works, but it ended up that he was allowed then to know they could be rented. So, even then, he still didn't build it. And that was, I'm carrying about seven feet of ground, but I don't, I don't know that that was a big factor, one way or the other. As far as the project that exists, I hate the concept of these water things being on my corner down there. I've got enough mosquitoes as it is, and now they can kill you. So, I'm not, well, and our neighborhood pool is right across from that. Their pool is right next to it. So you're gonna tell me there's not gonna be any mosquitoes? Well, go over to the one that's on the side of Walmart and look at that god-forgotten hole over there. Because 90% of the time, it doesn't have anything in it. It's just a big giant cesspool waiting to be had. But the thing is, all the water that comes from Price Chopper, the old Price Chopper, that doesn't exist anymore, across the street, across the highway there, all that water comes to our drainage system. So, even though they fixed the corner drains when they put in the fire department, well, a couple of them, that big drain that we had, water was over the curbs, people were sloshing through it. Thank God, I can see, that's my front porch. So unlike the nimby's that I've been called multiple times, I'm a front bee. So, that's a problem for me. You know, the fire department, God bless all those people. I love the fire department, believe me, I do. I've worked with veterans for 40 years, so, and a lot of them are. I still think the idea, why would you put a fire department on the corner and put a childcare center up on? a childcare center up on the other end? What kind of kids do you think is going to be hanging out on the corner up there? So that's another issue with the traffic. You know, we had enough problems with our own neighborhood, as far as I'm concerned, because 53rd Street and 51st Street are technically some kind of a minor, uh, road where people can fly through at 40 mile an hour, even when the kids are at the pool. And they run through the dang stop sign all the time on the Corian McCoy. They don't even stop. Sometimes they don't even look up the damn hill. I can see that from my front window. I thought about filling it, but then I don't want my neighbors to go to jail for running through a stop sign. Probably wouldn't be the most popular guy on the block. Um, anyway, so those are my concerns. I don't like, obviously, the density. I don't like the project at all. I mean, every project, Nichols put it out, it was supposed to be when I moved in, there's supposed to be part of Woodsonia. There's supposed to be houses over there. I was told they couldn't put a house next to a highway, well, go out to K10. Look at all those houses out there, no, 400, 500,000-dollar houses. So, and Greystone, well, look at Greystone. It's stuck up with a Walmart behind it. Okay, now, that wasn't to the interest of the people in that neighborhood, but I understand that's what happened. But I don't, I'm not in favor of this project, period. Uh, your traffic problems go up on 53rd Street, the new one you put there, and go up along there, anytime there today, and there's at least 30 cars parked alongside the street, but people are coming off the roundabouts. You know, that street is supposed to be wide enough for people to go up. Now, that, those, those companies don't even have a way to access their food into their building unless the trucks stop. They stop in the middle behind the cars. Now, where's the fire truck supposed to go? I mean, I can't go up there. I got a old beat-up pickup truck. So I have problems with this whole thing. I, I, you know, in all respects, the people want to build these things. You know, you got to sign up the street on, uh, I don't know what that is. When you, when you go through Greystone there, you go up around the curb, go to that little outer road, whatever that's called, that goes to all the shopping stuff up there. You got a big giant sign out there that says, "Multi-family use available, for sale." And there's nothing there. In fact, the reason they ask for a sale is because of the big giant power line running through the middle of it. So take this project, put it over there, get all the cars you want on that road. Uh, the other part of the problem is, I don't believe, unlike everybody here maybe, but I, I don't believe anybody that's going to live here is going to have a car. Okay? And, but I do believe the ones that do don't have, well, there's races and all that stuff that was in the picture that I saw. I, I don't, I have seen occasionally one Lamborghini drive around. But these, this, this, uh, thing here is going to be a problem for the school kids. And, and I'm telling you, when people come down my street, they're not doing whatever that's supposed to be. There's no street sign on it, so what speed limit is, so probably, it's a neighborhood residential. So I'd suggest that you just start away, then start all over with something else. Uh, I prefer having residential houses there. You can't tell me, you can't build them there, nobody's going to buy them, but people are paying 500,000 plus to live over in Greystone, and they got a Walmart behind them, then I think probably, you know, we can put some nice houses there. And even if you're going to put that highway, nobody tells you that, at least when I heard the gentleman speak to the roads going over 7th Highway, that's supposed to become a major interstate, not just a major old road down, down, boy, it's going all the way to Lumbur. And I worked up in Lumbur for 40 years, and people up there frightened to hell too, because they don't even have a way to take it around the town yet. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments.
My name is April Hopkins, and I live at 4851 Silver Hill Street. Um, we have moved into our house about five years ago. We are on the other end of 51st that hasn't been discussed tonight. I'm on the cul-de-sac, uh, the furthest north you can go on Silver Hill before you hit 47th Street. Um, so a couple of concerns that I have, and I probably speak for anyone else who's on my cul-de-sac. Um, we kind of like it. It's quiet, we're on the outskirts of the neighborhood. Um, 100 and some more trips that we're talking about, if that's really the number, is going to increase traffic significantly to my home. Um, the other issue I want to bring up is just past my home is the access road to 47th Street, which has no sidewalks. It has poor lighting. I see people jumping off the road all the time to avoid cars, runners, bikers, because people don't watch. So to add more traffic without changing any of that, um, I think will be a safety issue further than it is now. Um, the third thing I want to talk about is school. I have four children. Um, I have children who've gone to Monticello Trail, Mill Valley, DeSoto, and Mill Creek. Right now, I have a house divided with two students at both high schools. One. Um, my concern is that Mill Valley is very full. I know for certain that DeSoto has hundreds less students, and I know that they offer free busing to people east of K7 to get them to go there, because there are so many at Mill Valley. So if you add more children to this area, the school they are supposed to go to is Mill Valley. And unless they request a transfer, they will go to Mill Valley. And that's taxing on the school, and that is of a concern to me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Bruce Hayler. I live at 5421 Woodsonia Drive, so I live right in the corner of, uh, Woodsonia Drive and Johnson Drive there. Um, I have two major concerns. Um, I guess first thing is, you know, when, when it was being proposed, the Hy-Vee thing a couple of years ago, last year, I came and spoke, and you guys went against. I said then, you know, I said, I know something has to be built across there, but the Hy-Vee food place is not the thing. And you guys voted down. I was very happy with that. And then following that, now there's going to be a daycare over there. And I'm fine with that. That's a good place, good use, right across my house. I'm fine with that. And I think the same thing for this. I know something has to be built there, but this is not it, with that number of units, that number of people coming there. It's not the right thing, and I hope you'll vote that down. Um, I have a problem with the number of kids, as several people stated, 60 or 70 kids. Um, I work in education. I've been in education for 25 years. I'm a building principal, not in, uh, DeSoto, but in another school district nearby here, uh, principal there. And I have, uh, similar, similar complex being built right across from my school that's a little over half the size of this, and the city did a projection of what they thought was going to come to my school is 125 kids. 125 kids, smaller than that. But they said, they think, and that was with a study that they did, of people are going to come to my school once that is built. And so we're making projections of what do we do? What do we do for that? How are we going to maintain that many kids? How are we going to do that? So I don't, my guess is, when you, when whoever talked to 60 or 70 from the school district, there wasn't a study done, they probably just said, oh, I don't, there's a number thrown out there. There, my guess is there was not a study done, maybe I'm wrong about that. Uh, it doesn't sound like there's a study done on that, so, um, I would really go against that number. Um, the second thing is just the, the traffic. Um, and I, the gentleman I spoke for, Creed, said, you know, well, the traffic's going to 51st to 53rd, yeah, but it's eventually going somewhere else after that, not just staying on 51st to 53rd. I have a problem, I have four kids at home right now that play in my front yard, go on the sidewalks and all that. I'm going to have a problem when there's hundreds of more cars going by. I'm going to have to back out of my driveway, hundreds of more cars going by every day. I think if one of you guys, if I came to one of you guys' homes and said, hey, we're going to start adding a couple hundred people driving by your house every day, my guess is you're not going to like that. You're not going to want that in your neighborhood either. Uh, last point is I'd just say that, you know, you guys spend a long time debating signs, how big signs are, wide, all that, which I get, and that's fine. So I'm thinking if we're going to spend that much time debating signs, that we should spend a long time debating whether or not we can build something big like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayler.
Hi, my name's Karen Padilla. I'm at 22914 West 51st Street, Shawnee. Uh, my house is one of the four that face what will become the 51st Street exit entrance. Um, Susan also is just a couple houses over. She shared with you the concerns that we have, both about the lighting that's going to affect our home, um, not to mention our lovely view of four-tier, um, structures right across the way, um, as compared to what we have now. Um, others have shared with you the concerns about density, education. One of the things I wanted to bring up is the fact that, obviously, we're all here because we care about our neighborhood. We love this city, we love our community, and we want you to please consider that and do what's right in the long term for not just us, but the city and that area. Um, I also went to the resident meeting and asked a lot of questions that night. Um, what we were presented as the resident meeting was for us to share our concerns and give the developer a chance to change plans and to really consider the feedback from the community. Um, at that meeting, I talked to a lot of people as I was leaving, and I think most of us shared the feeling that they were going to do what they wanted to do, and they didn't care about our feedback. Um, so we really hope and implore that you will care about the feedback you've heard tonight, um, both with the opposition, um, the petition that was put forth, um, and the all the concerns that have been shared tonight. Um, we're not opposed to growth and development. This just isn't the right mix at this point in time for the area. Um, and I think you've heard that time and time again this evening. So thank you all for your service. We really do appreciate what you do and appreciate the time you've given us to hopefully really consider our feedback, um, that you've heard. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Evening. My name is John Bryden, and I live at 5117 McCoy Street. I've been a resident here 14 years and just want to address the crime issue. Um, if you go from 7th Highway on State Avenue towards the Speedway, right before you get the Speedway, you notice those big apartment complexes on the left as you're coming to Speedway. Um, I am a member of Maywood Community Church that is on the other side of those apartment complexes. The leadership at Maywood, which I'm part of, we went to all the meetings, and we heard that they were high-end and had high clientele and high renters. And we're excited that, you know, we have people that we can minister to and, and do outreach to, and we have some of the people living there coming to our church. They're, they're great people. But let me talk about the crime. I've been a part of this church over 20 years. It's been there since 1883, and there's never been a crime problem until they built these apartments. Um, the parking lot backs right up to our church, and there's a buffer. And they have the buffer, and all of a sudden, people's catalytic converters are being stolen from their cars. And then one day, our Cadillac converter from our 25-passenger bus was stolen. God will get that person, just want to let you know that. But anyway, uh, we asked the police what's going on, and they said they're coming over from the parking lot. What these criminals do is describe to us is that's, all these cars are there, so people aren't going to notice them. And so they come over and they park. So since then, we've had to put cameras all around our church. Uh, we have security now during church to make sure people aren't getting into cars. Uh, we've, we have a number of KCK police officers in our church, um, and I'd be glad to give you the police officers' names, uh, that would tell you about the crime increase in the area because of these apartment complexes, because it's an area where they're able to go with that big parking lot. See, they didn't get in our parking lot before, because when there was no cars there, police would drive by and lie to these cars in a parking church parking lot. But now this other parking lot behind the church. And so I just wanted to share that with you tonight, that that has happened, and we've had, uh, spent a lot of money to, uh, do cameras and everything else around our church to protect the people and the safety of the people. And so I just wanted to share that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bryden.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time, listening to all of us. Uh, my name is Christopher Martin. I'm on 5417 Woodsonia Drive, almost on the corner of Johnson Drive and Woodsonia. Uh, they talked about the traffic increase when the Hy-Vee was there, that they were proposing the Hy-Vee. And the traffic increase that was going to happen with that, they already talked about being too much. That traffic increase isn't going to compare with what there is going to be for this high-density area. Um, we've heard all about that, about the density. The one thing I wanted to point out was we just had an election, and this played a big part, at least in Western Shawnee's election. People voted across party lines because there were some individuals running for the city council that were either opposed or really didn't stand one way or another on this. There was some, the, excuse me, there was a councilman or someone going for council that had received a lot of, um, the maximum donation, the maximum support from the developer. Again, going across county, uh, going across party lines, that person was not voted in. I think that speaks to Western Shawnee and their ideas of what they want for this area. The development is not that. Do we, are we going to see something there? Yes, I think everybody has said the same thing. We weren't necessarily opposed to some of the things that were there, uh, proposed previously that were lower-density. The gentleman made a comment that anything smaller than what he's proposing now is not economically feasible. He didn't say why. Uh, what is it about all these proposals? Nothing was in-depth. It's just a casual comment thrown out there. I would like to know why that was not economically feasible when just a few years ago it was considered to be economically feasible. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Hi, my name is Renee Weatherman, and I live at 5125 Hilltop Court in Woodsonia. And I just wanted to bring up one thing that has not been said tonight. What if the developer has dreamed too big with this? What if the density is too much? What if they cannot fill their units and have higher and higher vacancies, 30, 40, 50%? What happens to the level of maintenance? I mean, you're, it has to be self-sustaining. The, the rent has to come in so you can keep the lawn mowed, so you can keep the, um, fence up that borders our neighborhood. What if he's dreaming too big and the renters aren't out there for, for this neighborhood?
Thank you, Mr. Hayler.
My name's Quentin Garrett, uh, 22621 West 49th Terrace, Woodsonia resident. I just want to thank the commissioners for, for hearing us. Um, you did debate a long time about a sign, but we've obviously been debating a lot longer on this issue, so thank you so much for hearing us. Thank you for the staff, for the report. Uh, and I also thank the officer for opening that door, making it a lot more comfortable. Um, I'll try to keep this brief, uh, just a couple of points. I don't want to belabor any points that were already made tonight, but just a couple of things to ask for the commissioners to consider. I ask you to, uh, to not put this to a vote tonight, unless, of course, it's not in favor. Due to the lack of full attendance of all the commissioners, I think this, uh, issue is important enough that you'd want to have a full body here, as Mr. Napin already brought the point of, um, there'll also be an election too, uh, so your consideration on that. Um, my next point is, um, there's been a lot of discussion about the 51st, uh, street, um, entrance. Uh, I, I think the reason we're seeing that is because of the high density that, that is proposed. It has to be in scope with the density that, that's provided. I, I don't think it's feasible to take that away and continue with the plan as it is. Uh, my concern is also for the kids. I drive that street nearly every day to get to my house, and I stop every day, uh, to observe the kids that are in the street playing. Uh, I, I just think if this goes through, something's probably going to happen. And I don't, I, I know no one on this committee wants that weighing on their conscience if it did. Um, in addition to the, the safety, um, I had served previously as an analyst, uh, for, um, in the home, um, home building, um, division for a certain bank. Um, I, my compliments to Mr. Creed. He is a very, uh, successful businessman, and I do mean that. Uh, the 2009 housing crisis, 2007, 2008, uh, he was one of the few builders in Kansas City that survived it. Uh, he specializes in this niche market, uh, and he does very well in it. Um, as far as the comment of it not being profitable at a different density ratio, I find that hard to believe. Um, awful enough for Mr. Creed, I would agree with that. Again, with him being a shrewd businessman, it's probably not in the margins that makes him, makes him comfortable. Uh, but for another builder or developer, uh, you've obviously had the plans before you before, uh, for another plan, um, and so I, I do believe it is possible. Um, as far as in schools, I, I heard a lot of comments on there as too big. I just want to offer some statistics on that, uh, that I, um, and this is all, uh, from the states. I just want to offer some statistics on that, that I, and this is all from the state's website. You can look it up yourself. Our high school, Mill Valley, has had massive expansion to it. We've seen that. Within the last seven year, seven years, the population at Mill Valley High has increased by twenty-five percent. It's one of the highest-growing high schools in our county. Prairie Ridge, which sits at five hundred and fifty students, and we've heard the numbers discussed about how many kids this could possibly bring, that is significant. Can the school handle it? Absolutely. They currently sit north of about sixteen students per teacher, which is one of the higher, the highest ratios for the elementary schools in our area. That number could potentially hit eighteen. Doesn't sound significant, but it'd be a very meaningful number to the school. We're already seeing that growth without this development. And last year alone, Prairie Ridge went from five hundred students to five hundred and fifty. That's a ten percent increase. The reason why is because we're a top-six-percent school. We have Blue Ribbon Schools right across from the street from us. We're knocking on the door of being a Blue Ribbon School ourselves. Our schools are some of the best. And this threatens the integrity of what could happen to our schools. So I'm very concerned about that. But as the commission to not approve the density plan as is, I would like to hear from the council what your options are on that. I'm not sure if this is something that you have a lot of room on. But I want to end with one last point, which is something that you do have room on, is they've asked for the townhome units to go from twenty-five feet, or thirty-five feet to twenty-five, I believe, as an exception. I would ask for you to vote that down. If you did that, my guess, that would dramatically impact their plan on the positioning of these apartment buildings and not make it feasible. And I'm not trying to put Prebe in a bad position here, but with the density plan provided, the impact to our roads, the impact to our schools, I cannot find myself in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Dave Williams, two-two-one-one-nine West Seventieth Street, Shawnee. I just got gilleted into coming up here by our new councilman. No, not really. Listening to everybody tonight, and thanks for being here. I just pulled up some numbers. I'm definitely against all these rental units. One of the things, I just pulled up some numbers here, and I think you'd be surprised to learn that as of right now today, there's only a hundred and forty-four houses for sale in Shawnee, Kansas. Of those houses, there's only twenty-eight that are between the price of a hundred and eighty and three hundred thousand dollars. And why I bring that up is I think I've talked to the planning department, and Chairman Busby was on one of the imaging seats that, or tables that I was at. And what came up the most, as Tony Gillette talked about, is there's a couple of us gray hairs that like to retire here in Shawnee. I've lived here fifteen years. I love it. My grandkids live here. I love it. They go to Mill Valley. But I don't need a four-thousand-square-foot house, okay? And there is, this property would be prime for patio homes for sixteen-hundred-square-foot houses for us gray hairs, or even for a new family wanting to start their home. As the presenter said earlier, people don't want to buy, they're moving to the rentals. What I'm finding, and I'm sorry, I should have disclaimed this, I am a realtor. What I'm finding is that they can't afford a four-hundred or a five-hundred thousand-dollar house. But for, as he mentioned, sixteen hundred dollars a month for rent to twenty-four hundred dollars a rent a month for a three-bedroom. In Bonner Springs, I was just out there touring a few houses, brand-new, brand-new house, just built for two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand. Yeah, it's a two-bedroom, very nice house on the main level. The basement can be converted to two more bedrooms if necessary, another fifty grand, maybe. There is affordable solutions for us as well as the first-time buyer. There's programs out there that us realtors can get these young people into them if we meet those young people and get them in here. But they have no idea, there's a lot of them that have no idea that they have, you know, a three percent down instead of a twenty percent down, because that's what they've been told. So again, when the presenter first started, when he started talking about tax evatements, I have a real problem with that because I was in the rental business. I had forty units. I made money in the rental business. So there's probably a lot of money going to be generated in this. But on the twenty-eight acres, and again, I'm just guesstimating, even if you just put four houses, four single-family houses on there, we're talking about a hundred and twenty-two houses, single-family houses. It's a win-win. It's a win-win. You're getting guys like me out of my house into a house like this. I'd be closer to my grandkids, okay, a lot closer, even though I'm only about ten minutes away now. But I could ride my bike over there now. But I just think you have to reconsider this property, and again, with the new plan for imaging that is supposed to be coming out in the next year, I think it's time maybe you have to delay the, delay the decision on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Does anybody else care to speak on the matter? Please.
Hi, Dave Auber, five-one-zero-five Woodsonia Drive. Can I get the screen back? Point some things out with the mouse. While that's going on, one of the first things I'll point out, I looked up on the National Multi-Home something, something, something website, some statistics on things, just because I was interested. Just as for reference, for kids, they were saying that you would have about point four kids per unit, which would work out to about a hundred and twenty school-age kids from this development. I don't know where the school, the school board came up with sixty to seventy. That just might be something to note and ask them about. Anyway, first thing, and this is just a minor issue, and I hope this one would be pretty easy to resolve. The street is proposed to be called Robert Street. Well, next to Robert, you have Woodsonia, and the next street over is Robert Street. So you're going to have two parallel Robert Streets here. I'd recommend that you would just recommend it be called Silver Hill, just to keep packages and everything going to the right location and preventing problems from that. Next, I did take a look at the preliminary plan for vegetation. I noticed that they have lace park elm listed in their list. I don't know if anyone knows this, but that's been declared a invasive species to this area, so I'd recommend not using that. Powell Gardens recommends replacing it with hackberry or sugarberry. So that's just a other minor thing to keep in mind. The third issue that I have, that I noticed, is that this, the street, again, seems to be designed to local street level of usage, but with four or five hundred units in there, you're going to get about three thousand trips per day. So that would probably require a much beefier street internally. And they'll all go out and go like four or five different ways. That may not be part of a traffic issue, but internally, it looks like there's, there might be a problem there. Additionally, with the driveway length, the townhomes themselves are all going to be three-bedroom. Those would probably take a twenty-eight-foot box truck, which, if your driveway is only twenty-five feet long and you're trying to back a twenty-eight-foot box truck in there, it'll be sticking out into the middle of the roadway with all the cars trying to go back and forth in there. That might create a bit of an issue as to why you wouldn't want to have a twenty-five-foot Lastly, is the specific density of the units. I know that the comprehensive plan, and I'm sure you're all aware of this, calls for medium-density bordering the low-density, and that the line use guide itself is just a guide to the current existing features. Now, the map that shows where they want medium-density actually extends all the way down Fifty-first Street here to the point right at the end. And again, it's not a fixed map, it's just a guide. But part of the, pardon the issue, is first, the townhome section, and you can see this right in the plan, is forty-two units on less than four-point-two acres, which puts it at greater than ten, which would make that whole area high-density. Granted, it's not giant apartments, but it's still a lot more units than would normally be suggested for medium-density. And again, buffering from all of Woodsonia, which on page twenty-nine of chapter five, it says, "Medium-density buffer is indicated adjacent to Woodsonia subdivision." Last I checked, Woodsonia subdivision actually continued down Fifty-first Street, and right across the street, you go right into the high-density housing units. There's no buffer there. That strikes to me as to be a bit of a, bit of a problem with the master, master plan. One last comment, there's a couple of cuts in the fence line along Woodsonia Drive. I'd recommend getting rid of those, just because mostly, they were presented to us as ways to improve walkability. Everywhere you're going to want to walk is either going to be south, or there's one park to the northeast, and you can easily achieve those by going out the current exits. The only real reason that those cuts would serve would be to allow for overflow parking on Woodsonia Drive. I don't know if the commission's been out there, but that's actually a blind hill right over that corner. We've had several bad accidents there in the past, and I'd be concerned with any overflow parking being in there and then having the fire truck coming the other way up that blind hill, some car driving out, and just causing an awful, awful wreck. I'd hate to see that, just for, you know, a couple little pieces of fence that could be closed off. All right. Appreciate all that you guys have done and everyone here, and everyone taking the time to come out and spend it. Thank you, Mr. Auber.
As everybody's already said, actually, my name's Ryan Ford. I live at twenty-one-four-twelve West Fifty-Fourth Terrace. Thank you for hearing us all. I know this has been a very long night, and there's been a lot of great points raised. I don't know if it's an option if I could throw my laptop on this projector. One thing I don't want to necessarily belabor is the really good metrics that have been shared about the schools, the traffic, the density. I think that's all been well-betted. I'm an architect by trade. I'm a strategic facility planner. I work on half-a-billion-dollar projects, so I'm a very huge proponent of data-driven design. One thing that I also had a chance to do since I moved here to Shawnee was I was a recent graduate of the Shawnee Mission Citizens Police Academy. They shared some pretty compelling metrics throughout those training sessions. I won't go into great detail, but I know there's multiple police officers here. I think one of the biggest takeaways that I recognized as I was a recent, I moved to Shawnee from Overland Park. I lived there for ten years, downtown Overland Park. I thought one thing that was pretty interesting is I consistently saw the crime getting worse and worse over there. There's a heavy density of apartments over there, so one thing when I went through that class, where I was like, what are the crime metrics? You know, it's the beta behind it. So readily available on LexisNexis, you can see an overlay of the apartments and the crime stats, and there's a very strong cluster of a lot of crime over at all the apartments. And you look over here in Shawnee, there's not nearly as much. There's a couple pockets that are data points that are real close to apartment areas. So as a father of two young children, I, the only reason I moved to Shawnee is to get into a better school district, put a lot of money into my house, and doing a lot of renovations on my house. And if this is something, I'm getting closer back to what I was trying to get away from, that's concerning as a young parent and a person who just moved here to kind of set my kids up for the next twenty years as they're going through some fantastic schools. So those are the points that I had. Thanks for hearing me out, like many of us, but thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Appreciate your comments. Does anybody else care to speak on the matter? Seeing as no, how no one has got up, and the public meeting is over, and the public comment period is over, that puts us in commission discussion. Ah. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody in the lobby that would like to speak on this matter? No, no one's come forward, so the comment, I'm sorry? Okay. Very fine. So that puts us into commission discussion. One of the interesting things is I'm glad everybody came in here, and I'm glad everybody was respectful. I really appreciate that. Everybody sitting up here lives in Shawnee. We're paid just as much tonight as you are. Don't ever think different. So we're volunteers, and we damn well care about the city of Shawnee. And you can tell by some of the things we went through earlier tonight that we care because we want it to be right for everybody. So if there's anybody up here that doesn't care, somebody tonight is going to be disappointed. We've taken the responsibility to say, we will serve on this, and if somebody's disappointed, we're still going to give them a decision that we think is appropriate as a total commission. So we're honest about it, so we'll be in commission discussion now. I will make us a little bit, say a few more things, and some of the things that the people brought up is one thing you need to understand, is the landscape plan is acknowledged that is not completed as we want it and won't be until we come up with a final plan. The lighting pollution is another issue that gets dealt with in the final plan. This is still a preliminary plan. It's a solid site plan, but some of the issues you brought up are dealt with later on in the process, so that we're not, so that would be, and I appreciate the gentleman's notation about the hackberry. I'd never heard that, so I'm glad to hear it, and I know nothing, so it didn't matter to me, really. So, Commissioner Rock?
I guess I have a question, maybe for staff. Have we, have we done, the city done a traffic study on this? I just know, I've been, I live in Hillcrest Farms, I'm up the road here, and my walking path is Silver Hill and Fifty-first, and the lady mentioned about jumping off the road, and I've done that multiple times. So I am a little concerned with that pathway out and how that traffic's being addressed, if it is at all, and is there anything we can do to address that or look into it?
Mr. Manning, would you care to tackle that?
I will.
Thank you, Kevin.
Kevin Mann, Transportation Manager. So yes, the developer did do a traffic study, and the staff has reviewed evidence in agreement with the traffic study. As part of that, there is a certain percentage of traffic going out north on Fifty-first Street, approximately about twenty-five percent. And so you're looking at like an AM peak. Basically, we're probably looking at around, oh, hold on, let me get the number out of this study here. So in the AM peak hour, you're looking at about a hundred and fifty vehicles leaving the site in the peak hour. And keep in mind, that's not the entire morning. That is often, made a little bit of confusion there. So we're just talking about in the actual peak hour, you've got a hundred and fifty vehicles leaving the site, with about twenty-five, twenty-five percent of those going north on Fifty-first Street towards K-7.
So my concern is also is when you get to that intersection on Forty-seventh and Silver Hill.
Sure.
Turning left is just, I mean, the traffic's backed up now. There's, how, are we going to address that at all? I mean, right now, it's just a stop sign, so I don't know if there's some plan in the future to stop light. I don't know. I just don't know what it looks like.
Yeah, and that really ties back into like the long-term plan for that intersection. We have no short-term plans to realign Silver Hill where it ties to the Forty-seventh. Long-term, that will happen when that interchange goes in, in order to have the spacing for those ramps to come off K-7, but that will ultimately be addressed in the future, not necessarily as part of this plan.
Thanks.
Commissioner Peterson?
My first question about that is, we've been stealing from the state transportation plan for quite- plan for quite some time now, and just got to curious, what timeframe are we, is the state speculating on that?
I guess I, I think that's-
Is it in ten years, twenty years?
Yeah, I would say twenty years, and I mean, ultimately, those are broad, long-term decisions that the state's making based on their transportation plan, they just got done with basically a ten-year plan, instead of going back and kind of looking at future projects now and as part of their planning. I think it was brought up too, that, that kid does have a plan for K seven, and then it was basically from Leavenworth all the way down to Aletha, and the intent is to make that, to basically to remove all the at-grade intersections, and everything would be grid-separated with interchanges. That takes time, it is a very phased plan, and you can't tackle all at once, you're going to tackle it piece by piece.
I had heard something very similar to that timeframe, and so I'm-
Yeah, that, I just want to be clear, that's not, that's not going to happen anytime in the, you know, next five years, anything like that.
My next question, if I may-
Please, Commissioner Peterson, go ahead.
Um, is somewhat a, a question, somewhat a statement to staff, we went to the school district, we asked them to look at the plan, said it's going to have this many students, whatever, they responded to us.
That is correct, yes.
Did we give them a specific number as, it's only going to be sixty students?
No, we gave them a copy of, they were aware of this particular plan. They, and, and by school district, I mean the superintendent of DeSoto School Districts, he came back with, they, their studies had shown with developments of this type, of this size, and their, and their studies have shown that it would, it would increase their population between sixty and seventy students overall, between K through twelve grades.
Okay.
And that they had no concerns that their schools were of ample capacity, and had no concerns with this particular development impacting their schools in a negative way.
Thank you. Now a comment, and you can sit down.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Peterson.
And the quick, the quick comment is, I understand that you're all concerned, and I don't live out in western Shawnee, but I live in an area that recently had some more development, and it's always a little, change is scary, and you, you, you fear for the worst, because that's what we do. I understand this project got put off a couple of times, but I'm a, I know we just had an election, and whether you're happy about it or sad about it is kind of irrelevant, the fact of the matter is those people that are in office are still in office till December thirty-first. They have a job to do, and I think they will continue to do it well. They aren't going to check out on you, and if they do, it's your, you guys showed up in force tonight. Continue to talk to them, they still represent you, whether you're in Ward Two, Ward Four, Ward Three, wherever you are. My point is, their term's not over yet. Please respect that.
We're still in commission discussion. So, we have about nine reasons why we can reject this, and one of the odd things is normally, it, it really isn't that common, it's planned unit makes development, we're changing the planned unit makes development, because we've changed the site plan, but since nineteen ninety-six, this is what was going to be there. Density changes, we found that density in the city of Shawnee and the neighboring areas, density is becoming less of an issue, because people want smaller houses, they want smaller apartments. If we don't have good quality apartments, and everything I've heard from this plan is, is good quality materials, rinse it, basically, I'm just shuddering at, that I sure wouldn't want to be paying fourteen-hundred to twenty-four-hundred dollars a month for rental apartments. But the quality, and it seems to be, it, in my mind is there, I don't have a reason to not allow the zoning, and quite frankly, the site plan to me, I understand the density, and I understand people will be disappointed, but I don't have a problem with it, because I think the quality materials are there, the way it's pushed back from the townhomes to the apartments, the apartments are basically out on K seven, to me, it's a good match for this piece of land. Commissioner Roth?
Someone had brought up the set, or the driveway length, is there a particular reason, they're asking for a variant, is it a variance on that? I think I heard someone mention that, just curious reasoning.
It would be a deviation from the code, yes. It's, the, the requirement is thirty-six and a half feet, and that, the idea with that was that you could park a full car in the driveway and still not impact an adjacent sidewalk next to the road. In this particular case, there are no sidewalks on that side of the road, so a twenty-five-foot driveway gives adequate, an adequate twenty-foot space for a car to, to park there, fully in the driveway.
And I might add that there will be no sidewalks on that side, so there won't be-
So, that is correct.
Diminishing that won't block sidewalks if somebody's parking there.
Right.
Does anybody on the commission have an issue with that part of it? And if the commission doesn't have an issue on that part of it, then I have no reason to say we should not pass this, and I need a legal reason to not pass it, that's the big issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, we, we get, you know, I have a development going on near my street right now, as a matter of fact, I moved there and-
Go ahead. Please let the man speak.
I just want to explain, you, you have to understand that the position that we're in is wrong, okay? We're not here to talk about tax incentives or tax abatements, that's not our gig. We're not here to talk about why a smaller development there may not be feasible. We're not here to talk about, you know, why we should wait for a new city council, I agree with Commissioner Peterson, and that council is, is still holding their seats. The struggle for us becomes, yes, you live there, and we get that, and we take that into huge consideration, but we're also being told by the school district that schools is not an issue. We're also being-
I'm using accurate information, I have a staff report that says the school district says it's not an issue, but it's the only thing I have to go by. Secondly, is that we're being told-
You should get some professional reports.
Now, let me tell you something, we, we very patiently listened to what you had to say, so please allow us to have our discussion now, okay? Whether you agree with it or not, I don't have a problem either way with it, but we're having an honest discussion out there, and we'd appreciate not being interrupted, thank you.
The second thing is, is we're being told by professional engineers that the traffic issue is not as dire as you say it's going to be. I don't know that?
Okay, I just, you can count me as a vote yes, thank you.
Any other commission discussion?
Yes, sir.
Ray? Yes, Commissioner Smith?
I make a motion to approve PUD zero-one-one-nine-zero-six, Woodsonia West multifamily rezoning from PUDMR to PUDMR, and preliminary development plan, fifty-one hundred to fifty-three hundred blocks of Woodsonia Drive.
Is there a second?
Subject to next conditions.
Commissioner Peterson? There's a motion, a second for approval of PU, approval for staff recommendations of PUD oh-one-one-nine oh-six, Woodsonia West multifamily rezoning from PUDMR to PM, DMR, and preliminary development plan for fifty-one to fifty-three hundred blocks of Woodsonia Drive. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carried, thank you very much.
I don't know, I'm pretty sure you-
After the meeting, I will try and answer your- Does the staff have any other business for the commission? Commission have any other business for the staff? Sir?
Please, we're still having a meeting.
There. He just made a threat to one of the-
Officer!
Hey! John, officer? Officer?
Sir!
That man just made a threat to one of our commissioners, right there. Now we'll continue on with our business. Does the commission have anything for staff? One thing, one thing I sincerely appreciate is, these are so long ongoing, and I appreciate everybody, I appreciate all the work staff has did on this, multiple times we've dealt with, or multiple times you've dealt with it, multiple changes, and, and I really sincerely appreciate all the work you guys have done on it, so want staff to know that, and I am sincere when I say I'm glad all the people were here, there were some things they said that I certainly have in mind, but there are also a whole bunch of things that we have, experts, that told us another way to look at it, so that's that. So, we don't have anything else, and I certainly usually wait for you guys, but please don't wait me, make, wait, make, make me wait any longer, Commissioner Wise.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Commissioner Willoughby has a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion adjourned, thank you all very much. Thank you all very much.